I hereby call regular council meeting on Monday, August 20th. The City Council is under the Council's order. This time it will take a silent moment of personal reflection. As a reminder, all members of council are obligated to declare conflict of interest or pecuniary interest as per Section 133 of the Level 10 chart regarding any item on this agenda. Counselor.
Thank you, Bishop. Just a question. As the council appointed a member of FCSS and as one of those that we're going to be debating to bring onto the board today was my nominee, does that qualify or should I stay for that?
No, you can stay for that. Nothing that puts you in a pecuniary situation when you're placed on there as a member of council.
Okay, so I'm going to declare.
Thank you, counsel. Good question. Good question. Because we all serve on boards that have matters that do come back to this council on a regular basis, so thank you for that. I'll ask for any additions or additions from you gentlemen. City Clerk.
We do have a request for an addition under any other matters and it's in 20 minutes for watching.
All right. Let me make sure. I'm supposed to check through that right now. I'm sure we just have sound. I believe by sound. Nope, I'm not on either. Oh, oh. Ooh, that was bad. Well, thank you very much. Technical team, moving on to the agenda is item number three, which is the approval agenda. I'll look at direction from council. Counselor Dachek.
Motion for the agenda, sir.
Motion, Secretary. Counselor Bucking, now. Any further questions or comments before I call for a question? Not seeing any. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to item number four, approval of minutes of the previous meeting. I'll look at council direction. Counselor Bucking, now.
For the regular council minutes date in July 16th, 2018, be approved.
Secretary. Counselor Baker. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any. I'll call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to item number four, approval of minutes of the previous meeting. I'll look at council direction. Counselor Bucking, now.
For the regular council minutes date in July 16th, 2018, be approved.
Secretary. Counselor Baker. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any. I'll call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Moving on to item number five. Is there any business arising from those minutes? I need to be distinct at this point. Not seeing any. I'll move on to item number six, which will be going to put block out for the public here. Taking us to the agenda, item number seven, big business and second point one bylaws. I'll put this over.
Yeah, you're worshiping the council to present by law 21-2018, the chemical waste water treatment facility borrowing by law second and third reading. And that following the final reading of the bylaw is subject to a 30-day appeal period before borrowing resulting in December 15th, 2018 being the earliest borrowing date. I can tell you that by law has not been changed and we have not received petition requesting intervention on this bylaw. The city's debt limit was calculated by the ACFA at 116,422,529. Annual debt service limit is $194,3755. About $40 million borrowing for the mechanical waste treatment plant creates total debt of $77,277,516, 66.37 of the city's total debt limit. At an annual debt service would be a final $308,966, 27.36 of the city's total debt servicing limit. And I'll turn it back to the council and if they have questions, Chief Financial will answer.
Counselor, any questions or comments? I guess this is as good a plan as any to give an update as we are here. We're at today searching for funding on this wastewater treatment plant and it will determine how much we need to borrow. We have pursued an application with government of Alberta under the new green funding program model that's been announced between Ottawa and Edmonton for province of Alberta, which we're eligible for. We're waiting patiently for direction from the government of Alberta once again. We have got some acknowledgement from Saskatchewan and there we do acknowledge from the federal government. So once again, we're caught between the three-parted play, which government's going to help make this possible. Conversation again with both the provincial and Saskatchewan to ask for an extension on that very commitment. I believe verbally they're still in pretty good shape. Federally, they're aware of our need to come to the table in the Saskatchewan portion. And we're ready to agree that's a way to get any kind of a lot of country really good on funding. I'm very okay. So we're sure this is a good comment that we have to do. We're doing it. We're going to see. But we have actually been very ready to go into administration and fast forward trying to move where we're going to be. We've been opposed by the federal government, the environment, so once again, we have another player playing. But from this perspective, this is the outreach and the farthest we hope we have to go, but I hope we can come back to the city council and advise on that we have the need to secure adequate grant funding to stay within budget as we planned. We were at $30 million dollar plan originally, and that's still the target I have, and we'll continue to lobby for that. But without moving forward on this, we're going to get ourselves into a heck of a lot of trouble down the road. Administration is waiting patiently. Again, we'll still need to get all the funding in place, but this is a process from municipal level that we have to have the conversation with taxpayers, the residents and businesses in this community to understand that we're not able to operate without a proper wastewater treatment plant. And the costs are enormous. We've already seen the letter, the offer directive, $10 million fine if somebody goes to jail until, at the worst case. And I've asked the question of federal government, has somebody given the giddy pig yet? I haven't got an answer back yet. I'd hate to leave that one sitting in this chair at that point. So with this, I'm glad we wanted to support this and move this forward. Where the rubber hits the road, we know that our level, Counselor Baker, you said it enough times, we get caught between the provincial and federal governments and here we are. And we're going to have to toe the line and hopefully that line we can show up not a world. That's what I think about it. Counselor Dachek.
And again, a couple things. One is, I wanted to just thank the public for the work that you've done over the past years, because it feels like longer, but contributing efforts working with the various ministries and also supporting administrations provided as well. I think this is one of those examples where when we were asked certain calendar by Minister Mason as to what we were prepared to do about it, I think we'd be fully safe at this point in time. We've done that, so we have everything we possibly can. We're ready to go whether or not. And I think from that perspective, good on us and the pressure, like the vaults in their court to provide the action. So I hardly see how we as a city could be sort of held on the hook for dragging our feet, not playing our part, not committing to our role. So again, thank you for that and I think we're in a good spot. Certainly this will, if nothing else verified, move down our path.
Any other comments? Counselor Buck, now to us.
Thank you, Bishop. Just one thing I wanted to reiterate again, just because when you look at the bylaw application, you know, someone could read into this the normal way, there is an application for an amount greater than we believe we need at a interest rate greater than what we actually believe we will get, but so that this doesn't need to go back for another bylaw to actually approve it once we finally do apply for the loan. You have to put these things at the high offset limits. So just so that, you know, if there's anyone reading into this, they can see, oh, why are they, you know, potentially going to take on 10% debt or there's no, or 10% interest? There's no expectation that there's going to be 10% interest when this loan is actually applied for. You just have to do that so that you don't have to go through the bylaw process over again. So it just puts it into an upset, but we're assuming the rate and the borrowing amount of players subs. Well, the rate will be for sure and we're hoping the borrowing amount is lower than $40 million. Thank you.
Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Bishop. I guess if they come with 10% interest rate, well, with 10% bylaw, that would probably be the thing to do. Oh, excuse me. Speaking of moving forward, I'm in favor of moving forward, not because I want them or we want them, I'm sure, it's because the way the federal government is laying the laws. But I think it's important that our community, like our middle community, that's faced with this same problem, go on record and let the public know it's not just Flint, Minnesota. I have no record of who else is in this box, but I, speaking of, I have been told there's others. And I think it's unjust, the way the overall thing has been handled by the federal government. And however, we're at the bottom of the pile and we have no choice. And the threat to send somebody to jail with that democracy, I don't know what's going on in this country, but there's something that's definitely wrong. People step forward to let their name serve on council. I don't think they're, think they're going to be threatened, they're going to go to jail over some federal law that forces the community into extreme debt. And I get through all of this business and I never seen anything like this before, even close. I don't think that this city has ever passed a bylaw for more than $25 million dollars, lower than $40 million dollars. I guess I'm just bent in, Bishop. Because that's the way I feel about this whole thing. And our public has to know what's going on. And as Hunter Johnson said, we don't want to have anybody confused, but we want to have the funding in place in case. And maybe down the road we all have other people in government that have more consideration for the communities where people live and step forward. It seems to be a money to distribute a lot on the road and just about for any other cost. But when it comes to serious situations like public health in communities, it doesn't seem to be a financial priority with some people. And with that, I would make the recommendation for the second reading, if you wish, Bishop.
I will entertain that. Motion and motion for second reading. Thank you, Counselor. Secretary. Counselor Dachek. Any further comments or questions on this motion? Okay, I'll ask you to actually read the motion, Counselor. Opposed? Carried. Counselor Baker, would you like to carry this motion?
Sure. The council grant by law 21-218, the chemical waste water treatment facility borrowing by law third reading. Only final reading of the bylaw is subject to a 30-day appeal period before borrowing resulting in December 15th, 2018 being the earliest borrowing date.
Look, Counselor, for Secretary. Counselor Dachek. Any further questions or comments before I call for a question? Not seeing any. Call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. I may admit we learn this decision this council will have to make, I hope this, let's move forward on this process. All right, bring it back to the agenda, item 7.112, I'll look at city manager.
Thank you, Bishop. I present 7.112, by law 2022, to the team, smoking by law, alter the address. Thank you, Bishop. The item we have before you is, we are requesting through your unions of amendments to the smoking by law. Administration oversight of discovery of the new smoking by law 1-2018, and this is, this bylaw is to replace the incorrect, incorrect smoking by law. Since the passing of the bylaw 1-0218 on June 11th, an error was discovered and scheduled to be penalties. We're going to develop the bylaw amendments for made to the bylaw text, but the section referencing penalties were not, in the schedule were not amended to reflect the adjustment to the sections. And the adjustments would be for the fence over smoking of vaping, smoking vaping in private vehicle, or smoking vaping within private use in the doorway, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4. The bylaw itself and the text within the bylaw has not changed. We're just asking the council pass through the news to the administrative. Should council pass the third reading today, administration will still have the ability to issue fine under section 4.1 of the bylaw. And back to you, Bishop.
Thank you, City Clerk. Questions or comments? Counselor, it's the person.
Thank you. We're getting a few looks around the room as to whether or not this, within my own personal feelings about three readings in one goal, I understanding is, so the laws are still enforceable, whether we change this or not, just not with respect to specific fines for those specific items.
Within specific fines under those sections.
But in a way makes the law unenforceable until we fix it?
It hampers the law, yes.
In a way, I'll just say this passes my test if the law becomes unenforceable if we don't fix it, then for me, three readings would be important.
Appreciate that, counsel. I think there was an administrative error, I think that was noted and to ensure that our documents are correct, administration knows it. Again, I think this gives the general confidence that we don't like to see things which won't three reads, but in the cases, an administrative matter, I certainly feel this is something that's in the order. Any other comments or questions?
And just to include the text of the bylaw has not changed.
If any further questions or comments, I'll look at direction from council. Counselor Baker.
That's counsel. Sorry. Sorry, Counselor Bucking, now. Just as I'm thinking this through, I was thinking about on the weekend, if someone since the first version of this bylaw has wanted to bring concerns forward about this bylaw after reading it, even though we've already given people the opportunity to do that once, if they wanted to now, if we went one time on this and opened it up to the public again, is that an option? Because we're now putting a new bylaw forward even though the text of said bylaw hasn't changed. Do we, should we afford the opportunity for someone to have one more say in this?
Well, I think administration's preference would be to move forward on the bylaw, however, council could pass the first and second reading and then the future requests for the third reading, which would force the bylaw to sit until the next council meeting and then, of course, could provide feedback.
It's not that I've heard any, any uproar or anything else, I just wanted to bring it up for discussion purposes before I end.
And that would be totally within council's purview, within one of the guidelines of administration. It would still not fix the law.
Correct. Counselor Baker. So the problem with the bylaw is just the price difference.
Or the number difference.
Then there's the number.
Number, okay. Okay, we had four last, so I'll take back to you. Carry motion.
Is that what you, yeah. You got it. You got a question.
Just to, Counselor Buck, I'm going to point that I agree that that is an option that we have right now. However, we had multiple open houses. We really are not changing the spirit of what we did a few months ago, it's just the form. In fact, we're just correcting the form to make sure that the spirit is properly reflected. So it makes total sense, I think, to just to push this one through. I don't really want to clean the next two weeks that we didn't get from multiple open houses.
Just being met, had administration not caught this error, we wouldn't even be dealing with this. So I don't think giving the public another opportunity to voice any concerns is necessary at all.
Yeah, I'm agreeing with that. It's just an opportunity for me to continue to learn as well, to ask the question in this public forum, because what happens with the situation is not, is particularly by law, it's like something else, right? So to have this discussion today was as much a selfish and educational piece for me as any of this as well, so.
Absolutely. Counselor Baker.
Thank you. Thank you, Bishop. Wouldn't that just be an amendment to the first reading? Shouldn't it show up that way?
We had a choice of amending the bylaw or just reading the bylaw, or we felt that was just the issue.
No, would this be an amendment to the first reading?
No.
No, because we're reading the new bylaw.
The current bylaw, when it's being used, has used all three of its readings, that's why we're asking for this bylaw to pass through the meeting on Tuesday.
So it's correct, you're confident, and now you're going to amend to by law, you're shifting back to the new bylaw, yes, from my perspective. But I have, I mean, the official community to have said, you have to be certain that you're reading the bylaw first, or you're, or you're, it's a question, Counselor Baker, for many bylaw voices, and first, so this bylaw, I mean, is a good sign.
So mistake made. I don't know if it's 50 bucks or 50 bucks, it doesn't matter. Can we just make a note in the city minutes that there was a change made, and this being just goes on record?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Somewhere at the council, it was written by law, people have looked at it, and there is a fine chart, and now we're changing that.
No, we're not, counsel, we're not changing any of the fines, we're just changing the numbering that goes to the schedule.
Oh, it's just the number?
It's just the number. It was a numbering error.
My apologies. I was thinking, yeah.
So certainly it is a numbering error, I think.
Okay. My mistake.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Counselor, thank you.
That council grant by law 22-2018 being the smoking by law first reading.
Secretary. Counselor, you're up. Any further questions or comments? Not seeing any. I'll call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
That council grant by law 22-2018 being the smoking by law second reading.
Secretary. Counselor, you're up. Any further questions or comments? Not seeing any. I'll call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
That council looking, grant by law, sorry, the council anonymously consent to consider by law 22-2018 being the smoking by law third time.
Secretary.
Just for your understanding, we're seeing recognition.
Looking for a segment. Counselor, you're up. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any. All in favor? Amendments? Thank you. Carried. Counselor, hint. Opposed? Apologies, I did not ask that question. Carried. All right. Counselor, thank you.
Any further final reading? That's our final reading. That council grant by law 22-2018 being the smoking by law third and final reading.
Secretary. Counselor, you're up. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any. I'll call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
With this, I'm glad we wanted to support this and move this forward. Where the rubber hits the road, we know that our level, Counselor Baker, you said it enough times, we get caught between the provincial and federal governments and here we are. And we're going to have to toe the line and hopefully that line we can show up not a world. That's what I think about it. Counselor Dachek.
And again, a couple things. One is, I wanted to just thank the public for the work that you've done over the past years, because it feels like longer, but contributing efforts working with the various ministries and also supporting administrations provided as well. I think this is one of those examples where when we were asked certain calendar by Minister Mason as to what we were prepared to do about it, I think we'd be fully safe at this point in time, we've done that, so we have everything we possibly can. We're ready to go whether or not. And I think from that perspective, good on us and the pressure, like the vaults in their court to provide the action. So I hardly see how we as a city could be sort of held on the hook for dragging our feet, not playing our part, not committing to our role. So again, thank you for that and I think we're in a good spot. Certainly this will, if nothing else verified, move down our path.
Any other comments? Counselor, back, now to us.
Thank you, Bishop. Just one thing I wanted to reiterate again, just because when you look at the bylaw application, you know, someone could read into this the normal way, there is an application for an amount greater than we believe we need at a interest rate greater than what we actually believe we will get, but so that this doesn't need to go back for another bylaw to actually approve it once we finally do apply for the loan. You have to put these things at the high offset limits. So just so that, you know, if there's anyone reading into this, they can see, oh, why are they, you know, potentially going to take on 10% debt or there's no, or 10% interest? There's no expectation that there's going to be 10% interest when this loan is actually applied for. You just have to do that so that you don't have to go through the bylaw process over again. So it just puts it into an offset, but we're assuming the rate and the borrowing amount of players subs. Well, the rate will be for sure and we're hoping the borrowing amount is lower than $40 million. Thank you.
Counselor Baker.
Thank you, Bishop. I guess if they come with 10% interest rate, well, with 10% bylaw, that would probably be the thing to do. Oh, excuse me. Speaking of moving forward, I'm in favor of moving forward, not because I want them or we want them, I'm sure, it's because the way the federal government is laying the laws. But I think it's important that our community, like our middle community, that's faced with this same problem, go on record and let the public know it's not just Flint, Minnesota. I have no record of who else is in this box, but I, speaking of, I have been told there's others. And I think it's unjust, the way the overall thing has been handled by the federal government. And however, we're at the bottom of the pile and we have no choice. And the threat to send somebody to jail with that democracy, I don't know what's going on in this country, but there's something that's definitely wrong. People step forward to let their name serve on council. I don't think they're, think they're going to be threatened, they're going to go to jail over some federal law that forces the community into extreme debt. And I get through all of this business and I've never seen anything like this before, even close. I don't think that this city has ever passed a bylaw for more than $25 million dollars, lower than $40 million dollars. I guess I'm just bent in, Bishop. Because that's the way I feel about this whole thing. And our public has to know what's going on. And as Hunter Johnson said, we don't want to have anybody confused, but we want to have the funding in place in case. And maybe down the road we all, and a lot of people in government, and more consideration for the communities where people live, and step forward. It seems to be a money to distribute a lot on the road and just about for any other cost. But when it comes to serious situations like public health in communities, it doesn't seem to be a financial priority with some people. And with that, I would make the recommendation for the second reading, if you wish, Bishop.
I will entertain that. Motion and motion for second reading. Thank you, Counselor. Secretary. Counselor, you're up. Check. Any further comments or questions on this motion? Okay, I'll ask you to actually read the motion, Counselor. Opposed? Carried. All right, bring it back to the agenda, item 7.112, I'll look at city manager.
Thank you, Bishop. I present 7.112, by law 2022, to the team, smoking by law, alter the address. Thank you, Bishop. The item we have before you is, we are requesting through your unions of amendments to the smoking by law. Administration oversight of discovery of the new smoking by law 1-2018, and this is, this bylaw is to replace the incorrect, incorrect smoking by law. Since the passing of the bylaw 1-0218 on June 11th, an error was discovered and scheduled to be penalties. During development, the bylaw amendments were made to the bylaw text, but the section referencing penalties were not, in the schedule were not amended to reflect the adjustment to the sections. And the adjustments would be for the fence over smoking of vaping, smoking vaping in private vehicle, or smoking vaping within private use in the doorway, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4. The bylaw itself and the text within the bylaw has not changed. We're just asking the council pass through the news to the administrative. Should council pass the third reading today, administration will still have the ability to issue fine under section 4.1 of the bylaw. And back to you, Bishop.
Thank you, City Clerk. Questions or comments? Counselor, it's the person.
Thank you. We're getting a few looks around the room as to whether or not this, within my own personal feelings about three readings in one goal, I understanding is, so the laws are still enforceable, whether we change this or not, just not with respect to specific fines for those specific items.
Within specific fines under those sections.
But in a way makes the law unenforceable until we fix it?
It hampers the law, yes.
In a way, I'll just say this passes my test if the law becomes unenforceable if we don't fix it, then for me, three readings would be important.
Appreciate that, counsel. I think there was an administrative error, I think that was noted and to ensure that our documents are correct, administration knows it. Again, I think this gives the general confidence that we don't like to see things which won't three reads, but in the cases, an administrative matter, I certainly feel this is something that's in the order. Any other comments or questions?
And just to include the text of the bylaw has not changed.
If any further questions or comments, I'll look at direction from council. Counselor Baker.
That's counsel.
Sorry. Sorry, Counselor Bucking, now.
Just as I'm thinking this through, I was thinking about on the weekend, if someone, since the first version of this bylaw passed, wanted to bring concerns forward about this bylaw after reading it, even though we've already given people the opportunity to do that once, if they wanted to now, if we went one time on this and opened it up to the public again, is that an option? Because we're now putting a new bylaw forward even though the text of said bylaw hasn't changed. Do we, should we afford the opportunity for someone to have one more say in this?
Well, I think administration's preference would be to move forward on the bylaw, however, council could pass the first and second reading and then the future requests for the third
I think there was an administrative error. I think that was noted and to ensure that our documents are correct, administration should know of it. Again, I think the spirit of the general consensus that we don't like to see things which won't be agreed within the cases in administrative matter, I certainly feel this is something that's in the order. Any other comments or questions?
And just to put the text of the bylaw as not changed.
No further questions or comments, I'll look for direction from council. Counselor, thank you.
Uh, that's counsel.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Counselor Duncan.
Just as I'm thinking this through, I was thinking about on the weekend. If someone, since the first version of this bylaw has wanted to bring concerns forward about this bylaw after reading it, even though we've already given people the opportunity to do that once, if they wanted to now, if we went one time on this and opened it up to the public again, is that an option? Because we're now putting a new bylaw forward even though the text of said bylaw hasn't changed. Do we, should we afford the opportunity for someone to have one more say in this?
Well, I think administration's preference would be to move forward on the bylaw, however, council could pass the first and second meeting and then the future requests for the third meeting, which would force the bylaw to sit until the next council meeting and then, of course, could provide feedback.
It's not that I've heard any, any outpour or other anything else, I just wanted to break it up for discussion purposes before I had.
And that would be totally within council's purview within the line of the guidance of administration. It would still not fix the law.
Correct. Counselor, thank you. So the problem with the bylaw is just the price difference.
Are the numbers different?
Then there's the number.
Okay. Okay, we had four last, so I'll take back to you.
Carry on.
Is that what you, uh?
Yep. You got it. You got a question first.
Yeah, just to counsel, I agree that that is an option that we have right now. However, we had multiple open houses. We really are not changing the spirit of what we did a few months ago, it's just a form. In fact, we're just correcting the form to make sure that the spirit is properly reflected. So I, it makes total sense, I think, to just, to push this one through. I don't really want to clean the next two weeks that we didn't get from multiple open houses.
Just being met, had administration not caught this error, we wouldn't even be dealing with this. So I don't think giving the public another opportunity to voice any concerns is necessary at all.
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with that, it's just an opportunity for me to continue to learn as well, to ask the question in this open forum, because what happens when the situation is brought up as particularly bylaw, it's like something else, right? So to have this discussion today was as much a selfish and educational piece for me as any of us as well, so.
Absolutely, Counselor.
Thank you, thank you, Richard. Wouldn't that just be an amendment to the first reading, showing that it's all that way?
We, uh, we had a choice of amending the bylaw or just reading the bylaw, or we felt that was just in check.
No, but would this be an amendment to first reading?
No.
No, because we're reading the new bylaw.
The current bylaw, when, uh, teaching, has received all three of its readings, that's why we're asking for, um, this bylaw to pass through the meeting. I'm seeing.
So is there a conflict in the way we're going to move to bylaw, or is this the back-up of the new bylaw, uh, yes, uh, from my perspective?
But if I had, I think, the old version, we need to have a set, we have to be certain that we're reading the bylaw first, or we're, or we're, it's written, it's actually been the wrong question, possibly, or maybe we're reading the bylaw first, and pressing it. So is bylaw, um, is it a good sign?
So mistake made, I don't know if it's 50 bucks or 50 bucks, it doesn't matter. Can we just make a note in the city minutes that there was a change made, and this being just so it's on record?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Somewhere at the council, it was written, bylaw, people have looked at it, and there is a fine chart, and now we're changing that.
No, we're not, we're not changing any of the fines, we're just changing the numbering that goes to the schedule.
Oh, it's just the number?
It's just the number, it was a numbering error.
My apologies, I was thinking, yeah.
So certainly, it is a numbering error, I think.
Okay, my, my mistake.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Counselor, thank you.
That council grant bylaw twenty-two dash two zero one eight being the smoking bylaw first reading.
Secondary, counsel, no. Any further questions? Call for any question. All in favor? Opposed? Carry.
Uh, that council grant bylaw twenty-two dash two zero one eight being the smoking bylaw secondary.
Secondary, counsel, no. Any further questions or comments? Not seeing any, I'll call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carry.
Uh, that couns- council, uh, grant bylaw, sorry, the council unanimously consented to consider bylaw twenty-two two zero one eight being the smoking bylaw a third time.
Secondary?
Just for clarity, you have a chance to recommend.
No, yes. Looking for a segment? Counselor, no. Any questions or comments? Not seeing any, all in favor? Amendments? Thank you, carry. Counselor, hint. All right. Opposed? Apologies, I did not ask that question. Carry. All right. Counselor, thank you.
That's our final reading. That council grant bylaw twenty-two dash two zero one eight being the smoking bylaw third and final reading.
Secondary, counsel, no. Any other comments or questions? Not seeing any, no call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Here we go, see a agenda, I have the number seven point, uh, three, opposite, city clerk. You can see that, you can see that.
Thank you, your worship. Um, the item before us is the council of work of general insurance and management request for proposal of Jardine Lloyd Thompson Canada Incorporated for a three-year term, and that the mayor has been correctly authorized to sign and see all necessary documents. Um, the agreement for the current insurance provider of city expires on October thirty-first, twenty eighteen, but the service has issued a request for proposal on June first, twenty eighteen, the current insurance provider for a three-year term. The R P, which was posted on the City of Lloyd Mr. Hinton Kennedy's webpage, closed on June twenty ninth, twenty nineteen, the four submissions being received. Administration informed in evaluation of all four proposals, they're accurate, she based on the criteria set below, um, fees proposals, um, fee and adoptable of forty-five, compress approach municipal requirement service and support twenty-five, qualifications from municipal experience twenty percent, and municipal references and fees of transition ten percent. As insurance is a fluctuating commodity, the fee proposal is scored based on the brokerage fee charged, administration also considered each area of coverage required by the city, as well as the local service, general insurance management, risk management, airport, local community insurance, seminars, workshops, and voluntary insurance. Based on the evaluations, administration is recommending to more general insurance and risk management, Jardine Lloyd Thompson Canada Incorporated, uh, J O T, um, who scored ninety eleven percent, um, of the total one hundred, followed by Marsh Canada Limited, I think I'm, uh, Range Street House, and then Frank Company Limited. Uh, the options are, the council approves the award of general insurance and risk management to Jardine Lloyd Thompson Canada Incorporated. This will ensure that the city is utilizing best study for insurance services. Um, the other option is the council request additional information from administration. This would result in delays in finalizing the insurance contract, per the policy cert rates on November twenty eighteen. Budget and financial implications based on annual insurance costs, um, insurance costs at city are approximately three hundred eighty thousand dollars. The J O T is the city's current insurance and risk management provider, administration does not accept, uh, does not anticipate, uh, the revenue cost.
I just noticed in the background, the Kennedy's actually closed June twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, I believe, it's the type of graph there, like the form on the front page, in the background. So it's actually done twenty eighteen rather than twenty nineteen. Yes.
Just for clarity's sake, I'm not getting ahead of ourselves, please.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? This came up, I believe, during our G P C meeting, when administration got this over for information, but we are a member of S U M A and A U V A, and both of those organizations are insurance providers, so I'm not sure if they're on this list or not, or considered or contacted to bid on this at all.
We were given the opportunity to bid, um, March ten years, there was some difficulty with A U V A, um, being across border, uh, insurance provider, uh, S U M A, um, did not submit, uh, the number of, and, uh, after that, they just closed. Yeah, this is what we have.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, I'll look for counsel for direction. Counselor, judge.
Council of work of general insurance and risk management request for proposal to Jardine Lloyd Thompson, Thompson Canada for a three-year period, and the mayor and the city council clerk, pardon me, be authorized to sign and see all necessary documents.
Secondary, counsel, no. Any further questions or comments before I call for a question? Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. It is nearing two o'clock now, and the books are pending, uh, two, one fifty-eight, okay, probably three o'clock. We can get through one more, so let's do that there. We moved to seven point, three point two, uh, look to city manager, here's the city clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Item four says the appointment to, uh, the Lakeland region, um, Lakeland Library and Region Board appointment, and the council approved the appointment of Richard Lazo as one of the two representatives of Lloyd's, uh, library to Lakeland Library and Region Board for a three-year term, expiring May third, first, twenty twenty-one. Lloyd Mr. Public Library is recommending, uh, Mr. Lazo be, uh, appointed to the Lakeland Library and Region Board for a three-year term, the City Board is represented by Chair of Lloyd Mr. Public Library, and the appointment of Mr. Lazo in affiliate position. Administration is currently in the process of reviewing the procedure and developing policy of board appointments. Past practice has been for the city to appoint members of the library board and the region board, and there's no legislative requirement to do so. The city will continue this process until a policy is in place. The options are that, uh, council appoint Mr. Lazo as one of the two representatives of Lloyd Mr. Public Library, to Lloyd's Library and Region Board for a three-year term, expiring May third, first, twenty eighteen, but the council requests administration to provide further information on board appointments. This is the period of laying approval of Mr. Lazo's approval of the Lakeland Library Board. Lloyd Mr. Charter is, uh, signed on the which conventional library act is following the city addition, there are currently no city bylaws establishing this library board in the year of five years.
Any questions? Counselor, thank you.
I'm trying to go through my, or I was trying to go through my notes on the weekend, I just can't recall whether Richard was added to the Lloyd Mr. Library Board or not. I remember we added Steven, but I don't remember if we added the potential new members, Andrew, Brittany, and Richard. Anyone know that for certain? Cause I, I just, I was trying to find it in my notes and I don't know what agenda package it was from, so I was, I'm wondering if I should have thought to email that one on the weekend after, I couldn't find it, but, uh, didn't do that.
I did, we did, we confirmed that as well.
Okay, perfect, yeah. I just can't recall whether they were added or not, and I'm not sure that one of the terms of being on the regional board is that you're part of the local board.
Any questions? No further questions? Counselor, back again, you as well.
The council approved the appointment of Richard Lazo as one of two representatives of Lloyd Mr. Public Library to the Lakeland Region Board for a three-year term, expiring May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Counselor, for segment? Counselor, thank you. Any further questions? Not seeing any, I'll call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. I believe you wish to take that back on. So we'll return, we'll return to the agenda of item number six point one one, public hearing. Public hearing for August twentieth, twenty eighteen, central for two P M, bylaw twenty dash twenty twenty eighteen, proposed redistricting. I would like to note before we begin, that during a public hearing, we are, we ask that you be respectful of the views of everyone here, and allow each person their time to speak without interruption. Each person wishing to speak has up to five minutes to make a presentation to council. If you wish to speak, please state your name for the record, and whether you are in support or opposed to the proposed bylaw. When you are finished speaking, please remain at the front, as council may wish to ask you questions. All discussions with council, city, uh, city staff and delegation shall be directed to the chairperson. Any questions brought forward by the public, which are not able to be addressed during this meeting, will be done so at the next council meeting. Council will not debate this matter during the hearing. The decision regarding whether or not to grant the bylaw further readings will be dealt with following the public hearing. I declare the public hearing for bylaw twenty dash twenty eighteen, proposed redistricting open at two oh two P M. I would ask the city clerk to confirm whether or not this public hearing has been advertised in accordance with the applicable legislation, and to summarize the purpose of this hearing.
I confirm that this public hearing has been advertised, and notice has been provided in accordance with the applicable legislation. This public hearing was advertised in accordance to one news on August eighth, and then merged in source on August ninth. The purpose of this public hearing is for bylaw twenty dash two zero one eight being the proposed redistricting of the Lakeside area, six H two.
I will now call upon anyone wishing to speak to the proposed bylaw. There's no members, uh, ask if anyone wishes to speak against the proposed bylaw. There's no members of the public who are in attendance to speak on this matter, I declare public hearing for bylaw twenty dash twenty eighteen, closed at two oh three P M. Returning back to the agenda, move us to six point two, I'll look to the city clerk, sorry, to the city manager, I'll look to the city clerk.
Thank you, your worship. Um, the recommendations the council grant, uh, grant, uh, second and third reading to bylaw twenty dash two zero one eight, bylaw third district, lot three, lot sixteen, nine one seven two three four four six, and part of lot three, block F, plan one six two two eight four one, and part of the southeast quarter, section twenty-six, trip road twenty-nine, range one, western fourth, meridian, all within southeast one quarter, section twenty-six, trip road forty-nine, range road, or range one, western fourth, meridian, from R one, single detached residential in R three, rural housing residential to C three, commercial. Background numbers is on May fourteenth, twenty eighteen, five hundred, we're receiving application, redistricting, lot three three, lot sixteen, plan one seven two three four four six, and, and part of lot F, or lot three, block F, plan one six two two eight four one, and part of the south, southeast quarter, section twenty-six, trip forty-nine, um, range one, western fourth, meridian, all within southeast one quarter, section twenty-six, trip forty-nine, range one, western fourth, meridian, the landowner has proposed redistricting, he has to accommodate the development of the neighborhood, commercial development, which accompanies any uses described in section seven point three point two of Land use by law five dash two zero one six, in conjunction with this application, landlord is also applied to subdivide and consolidate the subject lands due to development regulation within land use by law five dash two zero one six. Proposed site plans, this work for information purposes, and only not to be approved until the landlord applies for development permit. The site plan provisions, the pressure well center, which is compatible with adjacent residential development. The proposed redistricting is compatible with adjacent land uses, hence to the east, or C three, uh, neighborhood, commercial, and remaining adjacent properties are, are a single detached residential. On May twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen, the administration is she being initiated, a twenty-one, a referral period, and circulated referrals to the adjacent landlords within the thirty meter radius, as well as external agencies and internal departments. The referral period ended on January eighteenth, twenty eighteen, and ten responses were received from external agencies and internal departments, they were ill-concerned, no responses were received from adjacent landlords. There's no approved area structure plan for Lakeside, however, an outline plan and post land use concept plan exists for the neighborhood. The outline plan does not require an amendment, as the outline plans are not approved by council, and for information purposes only. Bylaw twenty dash two zero one eight was ran by council for the first time on July sixteenth, twenty eighteen, and the first reading of the bylaw and advertising was published in the local newspaper on July twenty-sixth, and August second, twenty eighteen. And the options are to council run it on the second and third reading, or council request for information. And government implications are in order to redistrict the subject lands of bylaw, no required to amend the land use by law five dash two zero one six map, and of course, one of that bylaw is attached. If there's any technical questions, can you attach it to him?
Thank you very much, sir. Questions, comments?
I'm going to state that there's been no questions, sir. Counselor, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I was just curious on the, the process side of these ones, because, you know, normally, as I understand it, there's the area structure plan process, so with a land use concept plan, there's, uh, no form of council approval, is the way this reads. Is that, uh, is that the intention of our municipal development plan and land use bylaws to have the outline plan as being relatively open, or is it more so the land use concept plan is meant to be an area structure plan, just old terminology?
Welcome, Natasha.
Thank you, your worship. So the area structure plan and the outline plan are two different levels of documents. Um, area structure plan is when we found our M G A, Alberta legislation was a new concept for the city, so we granted some of our developers a grace period to finish up existing development. Kevin must be the developer of Lakeside, he's at the very end, so he knows now, as he continues on developing Lakeside, he has to have an area structure plan. Walfsfield is at the area structure plan stage, um, we do have approved area structure plans for a park, even Colonial Park, as well, so those are something probably through the next six months, maybe sooner, city council starts seeing.
Okay, then, the way it stood, the, the old way of doing things is, the outline plan simply exists, but it's not really agreed upon.
Yes, because the statute of legislation is different, in Alberta, an area structure plan is a statutory document approved by council. So let's say if there was an area structure plan for this, and he wanted to amend it from residential to commercial, not only would he have to amend the land use bylaw, he would have to come to council with his concept plan and amend his concept, or his area structure plan. And then for an area structure plan from the outline plan, it's just the level of detail we require.
Right. So when I look back to, let's say, the four-plex, uh, when we first got on the council, there was an area structure plan, I believe, for Colonial Park.
Yeah.
That dictated that specific development, which maybe made it a little bit more cumbersome in terms of changing the zoning.
Um, I don't want to say it makes it more cumbersome, it just gives everybody a plan of what to expect, so homeowners can't say, well, I thought one time there was a park behind my house going in, why is there now residential behind me? It gives city council and residents all assurance as to what's to come. And then if they do amend it, they have to go through a public consultation process as well.
But that public consultation process on this one occurred all the same, as if it was an area structure plan?
Um, no, the developer doesn't go to the public. We as city administration go to the public, but the developer isn't forced to have any consultation with the public.
So that was, in terms of adjacent landowners being informed, that was city that was engaging in that?
Yes, that's thirty meter buffer as far as land use bylaw.
And there was no issues that were brought up?
No.
My only other question is, like, I understand that there's already, you know, intention to be commercial on the other side of the road, and then, like, just east, on the east side of the road?
Yeah.
Just gonna be like gas station type of, or corner store type servicing. Um, I'm just wondering from, uh, traffic plan, at what level does it normally require some sort of traffic study, um, in one of these neighborhoods when you're making a change like this?
It's, it's more complicated when we make a change like this, this requires just us going to our engineers and saying, like, what are your thoughts? We're going from a median density residential to a commercial, so in their opinion, the traffic was actually going to be less than all the residents traveling in and out, so that was okay. However, this is the benefit of having an area structure plan. Had we had the area structure plan, we would have already had the T I As in advance.
What's T I A?
A traffic impact analysis.
Thank you.
That's the traffic study you're talking about, sorry. We would have had that in, in advance, and we could have looked at it and made that judgment call, while in this case, we're just using, in essence, our best judgment.
Okay. And your best judgment, no big deal?
Nope. No big deal.
Counselor, thank you.
Lord, your worship, to me, the area structure plan is an important document, especially if you've got a portion of land, and nobody knows where you're going to know where, um, I can cite you many situations in this city where atrocities have happened in the northern side. If you have land that's raw, and it's being built in stages, and it's advertised ahead of time, and the buyer doesn't know it ahead of time, what you're building where, not after you build your house, then your outline plan is fine. I used to be in that business, and I used to drive me nuts waiting on those, those, uh, area structure plans, cause it's done forever. But if you could sit there and visualize this, uh, as a group, what you should have there, what you should have there, what do we know about the law? The builder knows what kind of business he can bring to our community, and he's got to have a place to put that business, as long as it's, um, advertised ahead of time, people before they buy their residential lots ahead of time, they know what's going on, it's not a problem, and it's much better. But I think that, uh, to say, comes to Jonathan's question, those homes were all built over an iron roof. They were all built as an empty lot, and it's our one zoning, and it's a totally different situation. The individual wanted to drop a four-plex in there, but we had no blueprints, no nothing, just wanted on the four-plex. That got held up for three meetings, because we never got a blueprint. If we had had a plan in the first meeting, it would have got approved, I'm almost assured of that, cause it looks like the rest of the subdivision. No, but just so we understand the difference, and there is a difference here. If all those houses were built, it might be a challenge to change this to commercial, if they had been our one sold, and then we wanted to flip them to commercial, that might have been a problem. So if you really got to go to school on that one, because it is different, not you, us. Thank you very much, Mr..
Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, other question I just had was, like, my group by the area, there's, there's only one house that's, uh, maybe in that little parcel sixteen on one of those lots, and the other ones appear to be bare lots for the ones that are subdivided. Um, does city administration also contact whoever the owner is of the bare lots, if by chance they purchase property and are not owned by those developers?
Yeah, so we pull, um, through our tax and our landowner, anybody who owns a lot within thirty years, we do, even if it is the developer, just for due diligence, we'll even send him one single letter as well. But if they've been saw, sold, and title has been transferred, we will contact them. This is sometimes where it's tricky, because if title's in the process of being transferred, we don't have that information yet. However, I know in this project, um, to the west, some of those lots you're talking about, there's pending, similar on eight to ten of them, and the developer has disclosed this information to the potential buyers as well.
Okay, yeah, I think that's, that's what's important to me. I don't see why this would be a, uh, you know, a value decreasing type of development, I don't believe that's true, but so long as the process is being followed all the same, so that if you were someone who, you know, is working on getting a house built on one of those lots, and, uh, the house is not there, it's just a bare lot at this point, I would hate for them to be stuck with something that they didn't know about, or something along those lines, because it was only a bare lot, but to ensure that they actually did contact, uh, the owners on title, and did the best we could, and we've had no, uh, complaints, or no, no issues forwarded back to us, I don't see why we would, uh, do anything but prove. Thank you.
That's where I was, similar con- That's where I was in similar concern was that we haven't had any and just in the last little lobby, we've had no comments, no concerns raised. So I think that, uh, that the community is aware of it. It's been out through the developer as well as the city, as well as the adjacent agencies that need to be aware of. So I think that answers the question very well. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any, I will ask for direction from council. Counselor Duncan.
The council grant second reading of bylaw 20 dash 2018 being a bylaw to read district all of lot 33, block 16, plan 1, 7, 2, 3, 4, 4, 6, part of lot 3, block app, plan 1, 6, 2, 2, 8, 4, 1, part of the southeast quarter section 26, 49, range west of the fourth with all within southeast quarter section 26, 49, 1, west of the fourth, part of R1 single detached residential, R3, Roma's residential to C3, neighborhood of Central.
Thank you, Counselor Second. Counselor Thorson. Any further questions or comments? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Counselor Duncan.
The council grant third reading of bylaw 20 dash 2018 being a bylaw to read district all of lot 33, block 16, plan 1, 7, 2, 3, 4, 4, 6, part of lot 3, block app, plan 1, 6, 2, 2, 8, 4, 1, part of the southeast quarter section 26, 49, 1, west of the fourth with all within southeast quarter section 26, 49, 1, west of the fourth, from R1 single detached residential and R3 Roma's residential to C3 neighborhood commercial.
Second here, Counselor Thorson. Any further questions or comments? Before I call for the question. Not seeing any, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Your turn for the agenda of, I remember, 7.3.3 SPCA best of. Listen, one, two, three, four.
Thank you, Worship. Recommendation on this item is the council approved the request from Lloydminster District SPCA to forgive the outstanding lease rate that totaled in the manual about $91,500. Information is provided at the August 13th, 2018, uh, government's and partners' committee meeting outlined in the SPCA's request for review lease payments under the existing lease agreement came into effect November 1st, 2006, to December 31st, 2018 totaling $91,250. Administration recently identified a lease agreement with the city of Lloydminster and Lloydminster S, uh, District SPCA located at 620267 St. Lloydminster, Alberta. Uh, 25 year lease commenced on the date of November 1st, 2006 and an annual renewal lease rate of $7,500. Prior to the winter of 2017, both parties were unaware of the terms and conditions of this lease agreement and had believed that there was a $1 a year agreement in place previous SPCA board meeting minutes and came to $1 a year lease negotiations. Since the question is not invoicing SPCA to date, nor has the SPCA made a lease agreement. The lease agreement includes a cost allowing to receive dissatisfied requirements to pay rent by just the kind of services rendered. There is no formal form or identity or acknowledging of a different kind or any kind of service being rendered to account for the city not invoicing the lease agreement to date. However, through, through review, both parties agree that there is a possibility of a verbal agreement made taking place with previous employee, city administration and previous SPCA board members. Prior to turning current lease agreement into a new lease agreement, the SPCA is requesting to have lease payments from November 1st, 2006 to 7/31st, 2018 totaling $91,250 to be forgiven. Request is due to the circumstances and financial constraints, impossibility of previous agreement on the original lease was executed. This outstanding notice has not been recorded from the city's accounting records, therefore will not impact the city's financial position. The city of Lloydminster administration and the Lloydminster S, uh, District SPCA are looking for direction from council to help proceed with the recently identified outstanding lease grant notice. Options are that council approve the request and to forgive the outstanding lease debt. The council will approve, uh, to forgive a portion of the lease, um, non-invoiced debt lease rate. Our council requires the SPCA to pay the non-invoiced lease rate of $91,250 or council direct administration to bring back additional information addressed inside of the future council meeting. The amount of $91,250 has not been accounted for in the city's accounting records, therefore it will not impact the city's financial position. Back to you, Worship.
Counselor Duncan. Questions, comments? Counselor Thorson.
Thank you, Worship. I have a question possibly for our CFO. Do we still have to record the two transactions even though it's in and out?
I would say that we can record the prior years. If you would like it recorded, I can check with you on yours.
I just imagine you won't have to, but that's just me putting my other hat on. But, uh, either way, um, I don't, I don't think there's any one of us that wants to see the SPCA go out of business. They provide a valuable service to the community, so, um, it's something that we, you know, a service that we need, we otherwise would have to do ourselves possibly for animal control and, uh, and things like that for the service they provide. So I don't see how, um, sending them a $91,000 bill is going to get us anywhere. So I, I totally am in support of, of letting this one go. Easy come, easy go. We were richer for about 10 seconds, but no, I think we should have let that one go.
Counselor Second.
Well, I think it's fairly obvious that it was an oversight. There was, it seemed that there was some type of an agreement there somewhere, uh, but, uh, if the municipality not sending out any invoices, it's pretty tough to pay when you're not being invoiced. So I, uh, I agree with, uh, Counselor Thorson there.
Counselor Baker, if you're able to answer that.
Worship, nobody can find, if you find the contract, so, is there a contract? There isn't, or somebody said something and it's $90,000? How did we get there?
We had the lease agreement from 2006, which indicates some lease payments, but, uh, other than the city not invoicing, the SPCA has provided some meeting minutes, which indicate that there was an agreement for $1 a year lease. Um, and since the city hadn't invoiced, we don't discount that. Um, we believe that somebody made an agreement with the SPCA, but it wasn't documented.
Worship, please don't add anything to council minutes from 2006.
I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, so, but there was a protocol lease of $7,500 was in the council minutes of 2006. Couple steps did not occur after that, right, Counselor? A, the city did not bill the SPCA since 2006 for lease, so there's no lease bill generated. So there's a failure on, uh, on behalf of that invoice to happen. Then there is additional information provided by the SPCA that they entered into discussions with the city and doesn't say who, for a $1 a year lease. So somewhere there was some disconnect. And, uh, I think it demonstrates the need, and the administration's identified that, uh, of going through leases throughout the city. This isn't the only one of us. Ensuring that we get our leases standardized. I believe that office, that now flows to the office of the city clerk to ensure that not just a department looks after individual leases, it's gone to one specific office. So we've corrected what had gone wrong. What we're trying to do now is deal with that ramifications of not following through correctly. And, uh, I think in the case of business, I'd love to, from my experience before stepping into this role as mayor, a customer would look at me and say, if you didn't build it within a year, tough luck, gain collective. And I think that's a pretty good rule of business. In most cases, you'd have to, a very forgiving customer, but this case, because of all the leads, the issues around us, the dollar lease and the understanding from the SPCA, we're dealing with something that's been wrong for almost 20 plus years, but it just, or not going, I guess, that just gets me concerned as well. But I think that, uh, the good news is we've figured out what we need to do to go forward and that's why we're at this point, but to do it properly. And when we have it accounted for, I guess, as Counselor, as Thorson says, we can't cry over if it's something we didn't have. It looked good for a beginning, but then it really wasn't. So we'll go further ahead, we're not $91,000 short in treasury from the finance department per se because they didn't account for it because they never invoiced it. So it's not a write-off, it's not an addition, it's just cleaning up the paperwork that needs to be cleaned up.
I guess for November, we were done to set for whatever the deal was, but it doesn't really matter. I don't know how it got there.
Absolutely.
Because the service, and I've read it for a few years and understood that it's a community service. And, uh, the land that's being used was pretty much unused, let's put it that way.
Absolutely.
And, uh, we need the service one way or the other. So I'm in favor of this, but I just, I tried to find, look back and see if I could find something. I couldn't find anything. But I don't think it went bad that far. Somebody said pay a year, but that's 12 or what is it?
Well, 12 weeks, 12 years. So process, process. And I think that, uh, as our council, we've identified process challenges and this is, uh, the administration has got the solution, so this is a cleaning up of the process.
I'm totally agree.
Counselor Duncan.
Thank you, Worship. I was, I was gonna say basically what you just said. You know, it's been a directive of this council to look into things, right? Take a close look at things, we're identifying, administration's identifying things that we didn't deal with. So as long, you know, this isn't the best case scenario for anybody, but the best case for voting is that it was identified and is being dealt with, and that's what we've asked the administration to do. And I think it's worth noting that they're doing that and finding these things we're bringing forward to deal with. So kudos to everybody for actually being able to find the things because that is what this council has asked them to do.
Any further comments, questions? Not seeing any, I'll look for direction on 7.3.3 on the council. Counselor Thorson.
I recommend that council approve the request of Lloydminster District SPCA to forgive the outstanding lease rent totaling $91,250.
Second here. Counselor Duncan. Any further questions? Not seeing any, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Let's see, say, 7.3.4, do you listen to her?
Thank you, Worship. Um, before I begin, I don't, um, I just wanted to advise council enforcement on the mini date of May 28th, 2018, council approve the appointment of Richard and Zoe Murphy to Lloydminster public by a three-year term. So just so that the council is prepared.
Thank you, Sister.
I was just gonna say, that was the one that I was missing from my iPad. So, thank you.
Thank you, Worship. Uh, yeah, before you use the, uh, SPCA lease agreement rate, uh, council approved entering into a 10-year lease agreement with the SPCA, uh, Lloydminster District SPCA, 4620267 St. and an annual rate at $7,500. Um, the information is provided to the government's priority committee meeting on August 13th, 2018, outlining the requirements of council approval to enter into a lease agreement for below market value. Lloydminster District SPCA currently lease agreement, uh, our current lease agreement has been identified for review and the new lease agreement is currently being negotiated. The original 25 year lease has, has commenced on the date of November 1st, 2006 and an annual lease rate at $7,500. This lease is also at a rate to renew for a further term of 25 years on the same terms of the mission. Prior to the winter of 2017, both parties were unaware of the terms and conditions of this lease agreement and had believed there was a $1 a year lease. However, there is no formal consultation of this. Administration moving away from recommending that the city enter to any further lease agreements at the rate of $1 a year. Non-service rent was evaluated by the real estate agent in February, 2018 and was assessed at an annual rate of $36,000. The existing lease agreement includes a clause allowing the lease to satisfy the requirement to pay rent by gift and credit for services rendered. The SPCA would like to see this clause included in the lease agreement, however, administration does not recommend the inclusion of this clause moving forward as it is in the years and quantified. The SPCA has not provided the city with any plausible income and services to consider. Uh, the city does not currently compensate them for. The recommendation for renewal lease agreement will be for a 10-year term at the same lease rate as the original agreement, meaning $7,500 per year. This rate is less than current market value, therefore administration seeking approval from council prior to moving forward. The options are to council, um, direct administration to move into this tangent of the lease at $7,500, council direct administration enter to obtain a decision at, um, at market value or council, um, direct administration provide for reformation. Government implications are that section 144, Lloydminster Charter, AR212, that dash 2012, in case the council's decision is required to leasing plans for less than market value.
Thank you, Worship. Counselor McRae.
Just a clarification that annual rate of $36,000, that's annual rental rate. This 36 would be meant to be the market value? And the 75 is of the annual in 2006? Is that around 12 years ago?
Counselor Thorson.
How much did we budget for rent from the SPCA this year? I'd have to get that in council.
My belief is we budgeted for the front keeper of the 10, the budget that is allocated for the rent for the jury, now, these about, uh, our seat or can't mention something we should double check on. Thank you, Worship. That was my question. I've read this a couple times, I didn't see it. I may have missed it. Should this be approved today when this, this take effect? It doesn't actually say it in the RFD anywhere that I saw. So if we see, yeah, $7,500 a year, has it been appropriated for September or December? Is it the only looking at 2019?
And if I can ask for a lease agreement, please, if you want, I should answer that.
Good afternoon, Worship. Good afternoon, Sister.
Good afternoon, Worship, members of city council. Um, in discussions that we've had thus far, it'd be that we would be writing off until 2018 and would enter the new lease agreement as of January 1st, 2019.
That gives us an answer to the question.
Thank you, Sister.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Thorson.
Thank you, Worship. Um, as a general principle, I, I don't agree with, uh, leasing below market rates, uh, to for-profit companies. But that, when it comes to not-for-profit companies, that can definitely be wiggle around and, and I can appreciate $7,500 rather than $36,000 for that reason. When we look at what the SPCA does in terms of providing a service and something that would otherwise be a potential cost to the city, which I, I don't know what that would be, but I imagine it would be greater than our annual ask combined with what we pay on a regular basis, um, for the services we require, not to mention you're talking about, uh, unionized employees and administrative bureaucracy of sorts to head up that form of department, um, the other types of pensions that would come with all of that. I don't know the SPCA's finances for certain. I haven't reviewed their financials in a year or two. I know I have looked at them before. Uh, but from my understanding, they're not exactly blowing anyone away with how much cash they've got now. I understand why we wouldn't put gifting kind of service as, uh, as an option if we have difficulty quantifying it, but the, my problem with this entire lease and actually charging them $7,500 now and their normal budget that they've been operating on, which I imagine is getting smaller and smaller every year as most not-for-profits around here tend to run into. Uh, I don't know that we're not kicking the SPCA while they're down in tough years like this, and so I, I have to say, I, I don't know what the right rate is if we do have to charge them something. I don't know what the right rate is, but $7,500 is too high for how small of an organization that is and probably for how vague of a portion of their overall budget that would that mean. I think it's too high, way too high for what they can afford based on the fact that we require their services. So, uh, I'm of the opinion that bring back for further information because I'd like to know how low we can go with this still making sense unless we're acknowledging the fact that if we give them, or if we charge them $7,500, that we fully expect for them to ask for another $7,500 when they do a third-party ask. So, thank you.
Counselor Duncan.
Thank you, Worship. What did the SPCA board directors have to say in these negotiations going forward? Did you brought to us a $7,500 request? I didn't see a bunch of background. I didn't see a bunch of background, um, anywhere that showed me that the SPCA board said, yeah, we can afford that, no contrary, what council person was saying. Did they actually say, yeah, we agree to that, before we're pitching this, this new lease to them?
So the conversations happened, had with the SPCA, they were satisfied with the, uh, with the rental agreement that was signed. Sure that councilor Torson said it was over, they'd be satisfied with that as well. They were satisfied with the, uh, seventy-five hundred dollars, because it was previously, uh, agreed upon.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have real issues with helping where we can. My concern is always, remember the Freedom A-ship commercial from years ago? If I give one to you, I have to give one to everybody else. That's my concern, right? Where do we, where do we go with it?
Councilor McGee?
Yeah, I, worship, thank you. I, I think, I understand the issue, the only concern I would have is that, um, it's a greater issue. If you say we, we charge you less or closer to nothing, it makes it even more difficult when you go to other people, uh, who may want the same. I think here, we can at least say that we are charging and are paying part of some, some rent, and if they're in financial difficulty, let them come back for an ask. Uh, that's always something I think the city has an opportunity to do. But certainly, if they've agreed to this enough, I, I don't even know why we're discussing it right now.
Councilor McGee?
Oh, worship, this is something to always come up. The SPCA, with the great service they're committing, they also provide a great service to other people, other, to other jurisdictions. And I'd like those jurisdictions to come up to the table, and maybe they do, I don't know about all of them. And it really doesn't matter, but I would hope that the surrounding municipalities are also contributing something to the SPCA, rather than the city putting up a bill for everything. Now, the roots were almost in here for gift and kind, and I have no idea what that is. And I'll leave that to administration to figure out how they deal with the SPCA, and what they do for them on a day-to-day basis. And I think they've got a lot to do with it, and they're very capable of. The SPCA's been going for, um, quite a while, and provides a good service. So, um, maybe the other municipalities can help out, and, uh, we can carry on on the way we are.
I can answer that, just if I may, a little bit, uh, I had a chance to attend the last, uh, meeting of the SPCA. Certainly, there's been a great lobbying effort to bring the other municipalities to the table, so they're aware of the services the SPCA provides. As a pure answer, I look to their executive director, and he's worked hard at it, and continues to make an effort to reach out to those municipalities as we enter negotiations, uh, with our neighbors to invest through the aid of ICF. Uh, there's gonna be an opportunity to bring that to the table. We'll wait and see if substantial has that opportunity, not only deals with the adjoining municipalities directly to us, but I think that I could say that the SPCA has done a great job marketing their information to other people. It takes other people a step, a step up, that's the challenge. Because again, they are a nonprofit organization, they do not, I believe, turn away anybody that they, they, unless they're absolutely full to the gills. Uh, they will take people in, or take animals in, and support people that way. So it's, it's a challenge, and that's always the challenge we have with a nonprofit, but it's a good point, council. I know I bring it up when I have the opportunities, especially with Mayor Huxley, who uses other communities in the area, to ensure that, uh, that we, they know that we're here working with them and hoping they step up. So we've got a piece of the cloud, right? It is, we know that you aren't going to pick it all up, and we hope we don't try to pick it all up. But it's, it's a challenge that we continue to face with the, as a regional center, I'll use that term, for sure. Councilor Torson, any comment?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, the one thing I just didn't, uh, I guess blame from the agenda report before is, so the SPCA, this was negotiated rate with them, when we say seventy-five hundred? Because it sounded as though it is, they kind of, they, they agreed that seventy-five hundred is stomachable, because that does change, that does change, uh, my view on what I was saying. If they, if they're okay with it, then, then I have a different perspective. If we're telling them it's gonna be seventy-five hundred starting now, it's a little bit different.
If the administration wants to, uh, back to, I'm asking you to come back up, because you was involved, I agree with the SPCA, that's right.
Thank you. Uh, so yes, the SPCA and the city administration, we've had these discussions, um, and they've agreed upon moving for this RFD at seventy-five hundred per year.
Okay, if you would, my state, just in case there's more questions.
At what date was that? Just they have had some huge impacts to their administrative costs and their income revenue for that? So I'm just wondering, when was that negotiation made?
These are kind of ongoing conversations that we've been having with the board members for the, since winter two thousand and seventeen, I guess. The last conversation that I had with John would have been on Friday.
So, actually, they've had a large impact in regards to one of their fundraisers going directly to a home for them now, rather than going to help with their administrative costs. So I'm just wondering if the seventy-five hundred dollars is still doable in that, or not?
John, do you mind telling me about the rest? I don't want to push out the start, because we have that's a good record decision, and we can appreciate governance, but as the execs of record, if you mind, giving a summary indication, can you?
Yeah, I kind of all handled it, it's down. Uh, thank you very much, worship and council. Um, so with regards to the, I mean, we're always looking at different, um, financial situations, and as council, uh, as we've identified in previous, uh, council meeting, and there are lots of moving pieces, uh, right now with regards to the SPCA in all considerations. It is honorable, as a board director, as myself, as executive director, to start removing all of these pieces towards a, a final solution, um, for the longevity of our organization, uh, in operation for the city of this here. Yes, the news of our largest fundraiser, having gotten money moving towards, uh, the old decision that the inter, the committee did make, uh, which obviously is a role on, is because they feel that now is probably the best time to get us to a new facility. So a lot of those moving pieces does potentially put into question affordability, um, for us. But we also, um, wanna say that, um, when we're approached by this, the council, uh, already with, um, administration, when the first discussion was, and the value was determined at, um, thirty-six thousand, um, seventy to seventy-five hundred looked like a pretty darn good number, um, so that was the decision that we felt, rather than going back and forward, considering the contributions that council does, and also us and the city administration, uh, for funding that to, um, continue to discuss seventy-five hundred dollars per year. These was at, um, the best use of our time and resources and council's time as well. So that was, again, a number that we felt was comparatively, wasn't quite comparative. We felt that was a fairly reasonable, um, number. Um, again, um, as I, it was, um, council regulations have it more, sort of, more for this side, that ultimately zero is better than seventy-five hundred, but we also realize that, uh, city does, is a business, and does have to consider all factors, and I do agree that it is potentially, uh, under our costs as to all the other nonprofit. So we are sensitive to that, um, as well, and, uh, we want to be, uh, we're willing to work with, with the city and, uh, the funded annual solution, and that one, and sometimes that does affect a lot on.
Thank you, John. Any other questions on this matter? Thank you very much. I'll look to council.
I have one more.
Certainly, Councilor Torson?
Just as far as, uh, the clause that we're not adding, um, in terms of, in terms of gift-in-kind services, because we're finding it difficult to quantify, I wonder if it's possible to say, if something can be found, or like, we can provide, uh, gift-in-kind rather than payment, if an appropriate value is found, rather than having it say you cannot? Because from my understanding, that's kind of the way, it's, it's always being whether it's right or wrong, I, I don't know. But I have a hard time believing that there's not, there's not some difficult to quantify item that the SPCA is, is doing, that we just aren't acknowledging, whether that's, uh, you know, on the messaging side of, speed and neuter your animals kind of thing. Is there a value to that? What is the value of that advertising that they're providing in terms of control of animal population that we otherwise would have to spend money on? It's just a, a question of whether or not you put an open end to that clause so that you can potentially have a gift-in-kind service that's provided at a later date.
I think part of the difficulty with that and the gift-in-kind is, um, section one forty-four makes it councils sole per unit lease, and that will reduce the cost of that lease. So there might be some difficulty there, as well as the qualification of what the value of the service is provided.
I'd say the two, I'm in favor of taking the gift-in-kind completely out. It's too definitive on what that is to one person versus the other. And then I also think that it opens up the door for other nonprofits to come to us and say, while we have a lot of volunteers for our organization, why can't we do gift-in-kind for the city and reduce our lease rate as well? So I just feel like it opens up too many doors and too many other issues, so I'm, I'm, you know, with the clauses to believe.
Thank you, worship. I look to this, maybe the CFO or city manager too, when it comes to contract type agreements. The city is not in a position legally to do those things, with this all under the same, the same thing. So having it out is what we need to do. If I read all the laws and regulations around trade for services type things in a municipality, I don't even think it's an option. I could be wrong, but I have to believe they told that.
Any other questions to answer that?
I believe that as part of your agreement, you wouldn't include it. But if they're providing services, they should bill us and then pay them for the services they're providing, rather than trying to determine the gift-in-kind.
It has to go up and come back somehow, maybe.
It's a great idea, believe the CRA looks at from a business business.
Might even have headphones.
Yeah, so, uh, it does need, the paper trail needs, I think I agree that the paper trail needs to be there. From the challenge, it's, this is a, it's a clear-cut business decision, that's what we've asked the administration to do, is this council, and they've given that, that's what they've brought back due to the charter. That's why it's here, otherwise this would have simply been negotiating the thirty-six thousand dollars. It was a lease that was signed by the city, with a nonprofit organization. But because we had to bring in a, it was going to be below the thirty-six thousand dollar threshold of, uh, fair market value, that's why it's before this council to be able to. I think it, we've had some great discussion on this. If there's any further questions, I'll entertain them, otherwise I'll look to council for direction. Councilor McGee?
I just wanted to make a, I have a question about the motion. I'd be willing to entertain the motion and then, and do it. Do we need to say, for the other question I asked before, the, uh, what you're asking for is to approve the annual lease rate, but it doesn't give us a commencement date? So I wonder if we should add that to the motion when we make it, because the problem is that there are such.
I think that we, uh, we would see January first. We'll see January first, okay.
So if that's, if that's agreeable, I'd, I'd make that motion with, with that gathered.
Okay.
The council approved entry into a ten-year lease agreement with the administrative district SPCA for sixty-two oh two sixty-seven street, at an annual rate of seventy-five hundred dollars, convincing January two thousand and nineteen.
Secondary? Senator Dudgeon? Any further discussion or comments? Not seeing any, I'll call for a question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Moving back to the agenda, it's seven point four. The chief financial officer, you have some please to be added.
Thank you, worship, council. I'm excited to bring you financial statements. That being said, there are draft June thirtieth financial statements. Uh, due to the implementation of the software program, there's a considerable delay in presenting these, but there's still our issues within, and so as you will see as I'm presenting it to you, there's a number of areas that don't add up. And they're just due to the integration between, there's three different software packages that have to integrate between each other, and some of those links aren't connecting. Uh, that being said, um, I have, uh, worked hard to, um, leverage some of my finance staff to educate me on the details, and so if I've missed something, I've brought some backup with me. Adele, Erin, and Melissa are, are here to provide support if you ask a question that I cannot answer. And I would like to thank them for all the hard work in trying to prepare this, because certainly there was some, uh, data sorting and, uh, Excel spreadsheets and pulling information to try to present something to you that will help you, um, make decisions moving forward. So with that, I'd like to, um, ask you that as I'm presenting these, um, if you can consider some feedback for us at the end of what you would like to see in the future. We have for you a summary sheet on front, and then a number of different departments behind. So I'm gonna start quite detailed, and as I'm exploring, I'll get a little quicker, because I'll, I'll, it's just repetitive as you go through the departments. So, please don't hesitate to stop and ask me questions as I go. So the first item on there is the net municipal taxes. So you'll see our actuals at thirty-five point two, and the budgets at thirty-five point two, slight difference of twelve thousand two hundred and three. The next line item is user fees and sales of goods. We're sitting at fifteen million versus thirty-one million, and there's a, um, reference to the lower-than-anticipated residential and commercial lot sales. Grant, uh, government transfers, we're sitting at one million six hundred and ninety-six seven thirty-seven versus twenty-one million. And there's a note in there that you'll see when we get to the detail.
Sorry, this is normally first question, was just on this one. Just from a timing perspective, do the government grants generally come later in the year? Because there's still ninety-two percent left to come for the year.
So generally, they would put in applications, and the application is going to be approved and fully, so the two thousand and seventeen asset is ready to be submitted, and then they put in applications for the current year before they cut any checks. So I believe that, um, in August, we were due for half of the MSI payment, and we have still a little bit of money to allocate in MSI before we get the remainder allocation. And I believe it was, if we get something in fairly quick here, we would have a second check in September.
Okay, so then, just to be clear on that process, so when we're talking about those types of government transfers, you submit for an eligible project, after you've spent the money, you send back and say, hey, we spent this on this eligible project, now they send you a check?
Some, depends on the grant. So MSI is upfront.
Okay, sounds good. But either way, the majority of them have not been received yet, but they were, uh, they're still in, we still anticipate you receiving them throughout the year.
Uh, investment income, we're a little ahead of the game. There were some investments they gave you, and we reinvested them. Uh, so we're sitting at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand sixty-seven, uh, of the budgeted three seventy-five thousand. I expect it's going to be higher than that. We're trying to review our best, uh, what's available to invest and do more investing so that we can kind of hedge some of our investments. Uh, penalties and cost of taxes are sitting at a hundred and eighty-two thousand six twenty-seven. Uh, that is the five percent penalty on taxes that would have been in arrears, as well as any fines and, um, fines and penalties for ARs. Uh, licensing and permits, so that's business licenses and building permits. Uh, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand six sixty-nine on a budget of nine hundred and eighty-nine seven hundred. Now, the other one is franchise fees and concession contracts, sitting at, uh, two point five million versus budgeted five point eight. And so that's a little, um, a little under the fifty percent. Donations are sitting at eight thousand four twenty-five, and that was for the hazard waste grant that was received, and a little bit of other donations.
Sorry, I should have stopped you with one, I have a second question here. Uh, just as far as, uh, five seventy-one, uh, that we received for licenses and permits in June, is there any magic to how that month, we seem to get more than half of the year's annual budget?
I believe that's a challenge, so it was recorded. So you'll see that some of, some of the coding, uh, is, has been difficult, because... the coding is, has been difficult because they've done a number of changes to GL or accounts, and so this was actually coded to one area and then moved.
Oh, okay.
That's just within that month it was moved.
Never mind, it makes sense. Thank you.
I believe business licenses are leveraged in January.
Okay.
So then if we get into the expense side of things, you'll see amortization there half of the year. Banking charges are considerably under, so that's a good thing. Goods, materials and repairs is at six point nine versus the budgeted eighteen thousand eighteen million seven. Next, we have interest on long-term debt, so those are our debenture payments. Under utilities, we have, that includes cell, cell phone service, landlines, power, gas and water, cable is listed there. We're sitting at two point five of the five point eight million. Transfers to local boards and agencies, and so those would be the third-party asks, and you'll see that when we get to the detailed savings. So bad debt, this was one, it's sitting at a credit of two thousand four hundred and forty, so the seventy-nine thousand that's sitting there is from prior years, two thousand and seventeen's debt, and, and so it's a journal entry sitting in there that was done after year-end, so it's minus a credit, and when you go to, when we get to the detail, you'll see that there's a, it doesn't match up to the actual statement.
So just, just to be clear, something was recorded this year and it was recorded as an adjustment to the prior year when you were doing your audit, and then you reversed it to current year, which is why we're back to basically zero.
Yes.
Thanks.
I love the counties and appreciate having you.
Try to speak English.
I understand, we reversed it, and then we put it back in, it's all good. Please carry on, CFO.
Okay, so then I wanted to add to the disclaimer that it's, it's a draft that the strategic and, there was a department called Strategic and Partner Engagements, and it's not included in there. So there's about eight hundred thousand that needs to be allocated to planning that hasn't been done because those GL numbers are now inactive. We need to move those over. And also we are not including the golf, LGCC is not included in the details. So now if we can go to the details, we'll see some of the, some of the issues. So under airport, we have user fees and sales of goods, so those, that revenue would include fuel services, landing fees, leases, et cetera. Under contracted services, so that would include janitor, our fuel contract in Nordic for air systems. Goods and services would be fuel, utilities would include power and gas. Now our building maintenance department creates internal rent for some of our departments, and so they cover, admin, the city hall, the ops center, and another one, community services. And so each one of them would show up as an internal rent under contracted services. The fleet would show up under goods, materials and repairs, so you will see that that gets repetitive, so after this one, I will repeat it. Airport doesn't get charged in internal rent, but it does get charged for janitorial services, and they pay you all power and gas. So the next item on there is the pool. So under pool, there's a government transfer of nine thousand five fifty-nine for a federal grant, and that was for an accessibility grant. It has user fees there, and the debenture that's listed on the books is for the airport pool. The goods and materials would include chemical, and they made their own power and gas. The next item is arenas, and that includes the civic center at West Robertson and Arch Miller Arenas, and it includes your standard items on there, user fees, contracted services, interest on long-term debt, and that's for the West Robertson upgrades. The next page is assessment and taxation. So you'll see there are government transfers, and that would be our grant lose, so departments that, government departments that pay taxes, they don't have to pay taxes, they pay grant lose, and so it shows up in that line item. So under net municipal taxes, that's thirty-five million for operating, and you'll see fifty million there. The difference is the school liability that we need to pay off. So on the budget, they managed it out. Penalties and cost of taxes, so that's our five percent.
Just one other general question. So then, do we kind of do this on a cash basis more so when we're recording through the year? Just so, you know, if you're kind of matching things, so yeah, we got the money in, but there's no intention of keeping it, record an expense and a payable so that they be in and out in the same period they're received? I realize these are internal, so it doesn't matter that much. I'm just curious if it's done on a group basis.
I think that's the budget.
Okay.
That actual transactions are being recorded, and we probably need to change that for the nineteen budget to ensure that it's more consistent, so it doesn't stand out like that.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that they're, they're showing it on a cash basis in the actuals, but they're not in the budget.
Right, okay.
So they should, whatever position we take, that's how we should report it, right?
Fair, yeah.
So under contracted services, so that would be our assessor. And the next one is the building maintenance. So this one, you can see where it's in brackets there, that's the internal rent, so it shows up as a revenue for them because they're charging on all the other departments, our utilities, building, repairs, janitorial services, and so it shows up as a credit here. Under the revenue side of things is their lease revenue, so they have lease revenues under the community services, building and parking, I understand. And they would bill out to the ops, RCMP and city hall and community center. And the next page is communications and marketing. So under contracted services, there's a delay in, in some of the projects to further quarters or, and or haven't, haven't spent the money yet at this point. So they're under budget on that. Secret council. So the contracted services, there would be internal rent, and then, and then the rest is pretty straightforward. So city manager would include ELT and the city manager, so the donation, so the donation to the hazard waste grant shows up here. And then under interest for long-term debt, you'll see that under the budget, it says five hundred and three oh eight. That actually is miscoded and it needed to be in the ops center. So the, the five hundred and, five eighty-one also needs to be reallocated, five thousand Okay, economic development's pretty straightforward. There's the memberships under the contracted services there. Emergency management, not much to include there, pretty straightforward. Employee relations would include HR, payroll, and under contracted services, we would have internal rent, training citywide. On the next page, we've got engineering, it's pretty straightforward, and then we get to finance, so this one, I have a number of things to, to go through. So government transfers, so the budget is two point two and the actual sitting there is three point one. So this is part of the integration problems that we're having. Two point one million of that three point one is an integration problem. So when you add all the government transfers on the detail and go to your summary sheet, it doesn't add up, right? And so there's a journal entry in there that has not been posted to the detail side. Licensing and permits, and so that's your business licenses there. It says zero on the sheet, but prior member I mentioned that it was five, and you saw it in the detail in the month. So we know that it's actually five hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy, but it's being coded under user fees, and it's been moved over, but for whatever reason, it doesn't show up on the detail side. So the links, see how the links aren't working well? Contracted services, so that's internal rent postage and the audit fees. Interest on long-term debt, this is, so this, previously I mentioned the budget was in the wrong place, so here is the expense on the debt for the operations center interest, and it needs to be, there's a journal entry that due to the integration, it's been made in the system, but it's not showing in the right place. Transfer to reserves for eighteen million on the budget side, that's the budgeted contribution for the capital works program for all the capital items for two thousand and eighteen, has not been allocated, so that would be my journal entry, and we haven't allocated that yet. Fire services is pretty straightforward. Fleet services, we have contracted services there in brackets, and this also should be the actual amount that should be posted there, is a hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and thirty, and that's because of journal entry integration issue on the journal entry, so it's showing the wrong amount there. When you see that next item on there, goods and services, so that's under fleet services, they charge out equipment rent for their fleet, and it shows up no different than building maintenance, it shows up as a credit here, and then they charge it out to the departments to goods, materials and repairs. IT, information technology, that's most, the contracted services is their rent and software maintenance agreements. Under land development, you'll see user fees and sales of goods, so this is that item that was identified on the summary that the land sales for commercial and residential substantially low. The next item is the Lloydminster Cultural and Science Center. You'll see government grants of fifty thousand, it's a federal grant of forty-seven thousand on the Canadian Heritage Grant for artifacts conservation, as well as a Canadian, Canada Grant for three hundred and forty, oh sorry, Canada Works Grant for thirty-three thousand The rest seem pretty straightforward unless you have questions. The next one is legal services, and so that's our advisory and consulting with the legal department to support our department. Land services is the next one, so you'll see user fees and sale of goods for seventeen thousand, and so that's insurance that has been billed out to organizations that are under our umbrella. And then under contracted services, it would include our insurance and the forensic audit. The next detail is the landfill, so you can see that our user fees and sales of goods is under budget. That includes our, the charges for land, for, for garbage on our utility bill as well as dumping charges at the actual landfill. Libraries, that's the third-party ask for the first six months. Parks would include government transfers, the fifty thousand is the county Vermillion User fees and sales of goods, so that's rental of our facilities. Planning and development licenses and permits would include development permits. Third-party development contributions, so those would be off-site levies. User fees and sales of goods would be sub, items such as subdivision, applications, et cetera. Contracted services would include internal rent and safety codes. Safety codes fees are contracted for safety codes fees. Need more information on that? I think that's superiors who want to say is the contractor. Planning, plant operations is pretty straightforward. Programming in advance includes federal grant of ten thousand for Canada Day and Sask Canadian Grant for cultural days. The user fees and sales of goods would include program administrations such as summer time. Contracted services would be contracts to higher entertainment for, say, Canada Day, those kind of things. Public safety, public safety includes the seventeen thousand for Vision Zero, and it would, the penalties and cost of taxes, that's actually fines from that department, so that would include your peace officers and the bylaw fees. RCMP nine one one services, government transfers is the RCMP leasing grant, and then contracted services would be our contracted K-Vision. The interest on long-term debt, there is RCP building debenture, and the credit that's in there is the accrual that was set up for payment for, so say the debenture was October, we have to set up an accrual to make sure that we're covering off the interest that was recorded and we haven't paid yet in seventeen, and then we do a reversal in eighteen. Culture, rec and culture services, that's rec administration, it seems pretty straightforward. Road make services, we should include some government transfers, so this says fifty thousand, but it should actually be twenty-four thousand one forty-seven. User fees and sales of goods is the harvest permit. Revenue would get recorded in there and any other additional fees that they would earn. Under utilities, that includes the streetlights, the budget is one point nine, and we're sitting at eight hundred and twenty-one thousand seven twenty-three. So we're a little under budget there, so that's good. Service sports center, I think it was pretty straightforward. FCS, government transfers, that's the FCS contribution, eighty-twenty between provincial government and, and the city of Lloyd. Under transfers to local boards or agencies, I've got that split into two areas. Two hundred and seventy-one thousand is for FCS applications, and two hundred and eighty thousand three eighty-nine is for community programs for engagement. Transfer Canada Days on, that includes internal rent and salaries. Big Juba Theater is the third-party ask. Water services, so I've got some items on this one. User fees and sales of goods, that's our utility revenue on our utility bill. The bad debt, you'll see on the cover, we spoke earlier, was it a negative two thousand forty-four? It's sitting here at ninety-one thousand eight seventy-four because that integration issue, the other side of the issue's not posted here, but it's posted on the summary. So we're still working on that detail to try to get that, that kind of stuff fixed. Interest on long-term debt, so there's another accrual entry sitting in a credit, and transfers to reserve, so this is the budgeted contribution to put money, any surplus in. in, 20% of the surplus, I think is what was proposed in the budget to go to a reserve for that department. So that's that budgeted amount. The entry is not made at this point. Water treatment plant was straightforward. Wastewater collection includes storm management. And there's a water sewer dementia listed there for 39,000. That being said, do you have any questions? I mean, there was a lot to digest, I realize.
I appreciate the fact that we did go through it. It's not the most exciting exercise in the world, but nonetheless, we have the details in front of us and we're getting to the point that we have to, so. Yes.
Thank you, worship. I'm like you, I'm pleased. We can read these, they're separated and they're clear. Thank you very much. It's not all jammed on a little page. And we can afford a couple sheets paper. It's good. These are really easy to follow, even for people that aren't accomplished. It's really easy to follow. The numbers right now are a little distraught, but I'm sure with the new system finally online, hopefully it'll be better. I think this does one thing that makes it really good, so our public knows. When they won't look at something, they can look at, if they won't look at big ones, the sports center or Gulf of Country Club, there is, boys and girls, this is the revenue and this is the cost. And when people want to talk about, you know, maybe the fees are too high in some venues, this is pretty clear that it's costing them a lot of money to keep those to sell over and above the revenues. And I think that'll make everybody's job a lot easier. It certainly will in my mind, not a question about it. So thank you very much. We look forward to the revised copy when we have it.
Counselor Torres.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I apologize that I have a painful look on my face because I know how painful it is when, you know, systems are not communicating the way they are. You made the correct entry and it somehow doesn't show up. You know, overall, I'm really happy to see something. However, the other side of me is thinking, if we have any room to budget, if you guys need outside help to get things working properly, do it. Because as much as this is valuable, if someone picks this up and wasn't at this meeting and doesn't have all the detail that you just provided, they're going to read something completely different than what we're here to commit. So if you don't have the context of the story behind, well, this should be recorded there, that should be recorded here, and just imagine that that entry is zeroed out the way it was supposed to. If you don't have that context, then it will mislead the user of the financial statement. So I am, I really believe that this needs to get fixed as soon as possible, if it's not already, because maybe in the last two months it has been. But I have a lot of concern with it because it's kind of like driving with the headlights off. So is the manager of the airport getting these regularly? And is he making appropriate decisions based on the most relevant and important information to him? Or is he getting information that is causing him to make decisions, or the wrong decisions? Do you know what I mean? So it's really, really important that we get it working, we get it right. And I'm not blaming anyone individually, because I don't think it's anyone's fault, but perhaps, you know, the information that we were provided at the time when we switched so many systems at once, when we were told it was a great idea and we bought into that and we chose to do that and we stand by our decision, I suppose. But at the same time, it's better than nothing. And with the context, it's great to have something. My only concern is someone who's downloading this report, who's really interested in municipal finance, I know they don't exist, but they're going to be sitting at their house and they're going to be going through this and saying, well, these numbers don't make sense, they're not adding up. So as much as it's great, I don't think we need to get to the next step of making sure we fix these small issues. I'm not telling you anything you don't love. I don't even know that. The only thing is, you ask for feedback. I am a big proponent, proponent of current month actual, current month budget, year-to-date actual, year-to-date budget, variance for each. Then we know where we're at relative to where we think we're going to, or where we should be at. That's just the way I look at the world. Some people will look at it slightly different. I know having annual budget with the percentage of the budget you use for the year works in some cases, but it depends on how you budget. So if you budget everything smoothly, evenly, like something's going to happen evenly the same every month over the course of the year, looks very different from, we expect all this to happen and all this. So depending on how you budget will greatly affect how you look at these numbers in context without having a big explanation behind it. Either way, look great. And I feel for the people who've had to go through this painstaking process for the last six months to try and make it work. But I really hope we can get it hammered out the rest of the way, just the last few steps as soon as possible, because it's a big concern of mine. And our goal on council is to provide fiduciary oversight. And if we're not able to do that, then we're not really doing our job. Thank you.
Counselor Judge. Do we have the capacity right now to print out a line code? So are all the lines coded and entered into our program at this point?
On my down desk. Would you mind repeating the question?
So are all the, like, when I say the budget has to look at line codes, right? The code for the budget. So have we entered all the codes in by department and they're all available by a line?
Yes, so our budget is very detailed. We have to provide a line-by-line budget. I think what's happening right now is we have a lot of integration issues getting the actuals over to the management reports that you saw that detail aside.
That's what we're going to get to is when it's all.
So there's a lot of work being done in finance, that's the backside. I've had several conversations with city manager and CFO regarding what can we, what are we looking for? I think right now, the looking at part of the report coming forward, it's what we've discussed at this point, how's the system? And our team gets fully budgeted into that new system because last year was their first kick in the cap. And as you can appreciate, when you take a team that hasn't had to be down to the level of budgeting at the management level, we introduced a brand-new system to our team and they responded. And I think they're going to get better, is the term I'll use, because they took a kick out of it. They did what they did, we've got a budget, we're working with this shit. Next year, they're going to have a much better idea of what the expectation is from administration top-down, from the city manager through his direct reports flowing down. And we'll see those numbers and that information where we'll be able to give it to them as well, with the system that's in place, once all the cases are worked out. As I said, anyone who's had the opportunity to go through an IT system and finance, it never is as simple as, as the consultant, as though the previous council on the administration had this perfect system. It's a great system, but we're still working through a few old bugs and from that perspective. But I think that we're going to get there. And I'm looking forward to the budget of 2019 coming forward for administration and having that ability to talk about that.
I would add that we also have to change the team members and I think, you know, that's always a bit of a distraction. Permanent, you know, structure and membership on the team, which I think goes a long way down the road when you begin working together and creating budgets.
Counselor Judge.
Just wanted to commend you on the work that you've been doing. You know, it's certainly a tough slug. I've been through that on the finance side and I know you've been putting in tons of hours, so we really do appreciate it. Because I think as Counselor Jonathan said, as far as if you do need some extra help and you have the dollars in the budget, if there's something that can expedite things, we should really take a look at that.
One other comment I got, a lately statement of operations. One of the items that we saw previously was a summary of the dementia, basically, what we had outstanding when dementia would become overdue as that second page. Even though it's something that, once it's done, it's done, it's important that this council keeps that in mind, we refer to it, we just talked about borrowing $40 million today and putting that in perspective. So that's always in the back of our minds because we do have law of limited PD Bank, like the provincial framework of elements, we have to operate within budget, we have to stay within a borrowing limit. And I think that's always important as we talk about capital projects and potential capital projects, knowing when something will be paid off or reduce that payment in the long-term planning. It's just something that's always in the back of the mind, so I could ask for that. Counselor.
Thank you, worship. Yeah, that was another thing I guess I overlooked. Once things are smoothed out a little bit with this too, because I know there's probably some integration issues with that too, with our balance sheet to go with the statement of operations. So we have kind of the full picture and you kind of need one with the other to see what's really happening. So that would be great once we can get there.
Are you receptive to a quarterly statements of the work when fixing up some of this information and then bringing back the third quarter in October?
Totally receptive. I guess the only thing that I really need is the nod that, yes, we're going to get to the point where internal management is getting the regular reports that they need for proper decision-making prior to getting to us. You know, we're relatively looking in the rearview mirror month anyways, but so long as the people who need them for decision-making purposes have them. So if they're going way over budget on something, they need to make some adjustments or need to make a capital ask for the next year because there's, you know, issues that are coming up on our repairs and maintenance thing. I'd like to know that that management side is going on that these statements are providing the value that they need to revise from an operational point of view. With us getting them regularly, I'm good with that, so long as I know that they're being looked at more regularly than that by internal management.
Sure. If I could just add, Counselor Torres, and they've had access to these management reports since, I think, June 1st. So they have the ability to go and retrieve this information whenever they like.
Excellent. I think that's something that's new to the management team throughout the city, that they have that ability to access financial reports at their desk rather than process the previous. We've made headroom, we're getting there. Faster to the snail, but not as fast as the hare. Thank you very much. Denise, thank you so much. I know you've walked into this and been broken up to pieces with a great team and leading that team, and thank you for your efforts because certainly at the end of the day, the finance lead to a cut and we want to make sure that we've got a good handle on your work there. So looking at.
The council's top financial statement for the month end, month end, June 30th, 2018.
Second one. Counselor Buckner, any further questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
Considering the substantive need for explanations within this, do we want to accept this information as though they're found on record when there's potentially missing context on the document that's going up to the bottom? Just a question. Or do we wait until a following period when we got them all together and we were confident that they're talking to each other properly? Or does it matter? Maybe it doesn't matter. I would rather accept them as a draft rather than it being true financial information when you know that there are a handful of issues, maybe not too confusing, but they could confuse the other readers.
Would you ever accept the friendly?
Yeah, so accept the draft financial statement as a friendly.
Okay. That's what you agreed, all right. Any further questions?
I'm just adding, I guess, if we are going to post it, you know, the possibility of even adding the comments that you shared with us verbally some point in time, you know, as, because you put the detail notes on the bottom, one to 10 on the first page and others. And so I can't remember if all of them grabbed all of the connections between one area and another, but even the statement added to something to that effect as to ensure, as Counselor Torres and person has said, is there are anomalies in there that don't add up, so people don't rush to judge.
All right. I'm going to call for a question, I must attend another conference. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Moving back to the agenda at 7.5. To the city manager, to the Lakeland College facility use agreement.
Thank you, worship.
Congratulations, Counselor Torres.
Congratulations, George.
With recognition, the council approved the Lakeland College facility use agreement and the mayor and state clerk are authorized to sign and seal all the necessary documents. The issue currently of Lakeland College facility use agreement has started and the agreement is ready for approval. This form of agreement, the last one was in 2015, it gives access to current students, full-time students of Lakeland College campus to use the service sports center and the aquatic center. Through negotiations with Lakeland College, it's been agreed that we would increase the fee. 2019 and 19 would be a $5 student. Following year would be $50, $50. And the third year, $53 a student. These fees come off of these students. Fees are paid to Lakeland and Lakeland returns it to us. There is an additional fee that each student pays at the field is $5 and is for the tag they receive for the membership. So options, the council approved the Lakeland College facility use agreement, that the mayor and state clerk are authorized to sign and seal all of the necessary documents. This will ensure that students have access to the facilities and start their school year. Second option, the council requests city administration to bring additional information to the next council meeting. This would cause the LA students having access to the facilities and the ability to start their school years upcoming. And third, the council has approved the Lakeland College facility use agreement as presented. This would no longer give Lakeland College students the discounted membership rate. Free for any questions. The budget financial implication last year, the city would have been to receive almost $23,000 from Lakeland College memberships, full student memberships, forward to this.
Thank you, George.
Even though I will not stand in benefit from any part of this decision, I would just ask to be excused as unemployed at Lakeland College as well.
Totally understand the point, Counselor. Questions or comments? Counselor Buckner.
As a prepared-made motion, I think this is one of those great joint use agreements. It's the one between the city and the college, so.
100%. If there's no further questions or comments, I'm going to put the motion back to make the motion.
Council approved Lakeland College facility use agreement, that the mayor and state clerk are authorized to sign and seal all the necessary documents.
Second one, Counselor Baker. Any further questions or comments? Not seen yet. Call for a question, all in favor? Opposed? Carry. Chris? Thank you, George.
George.
All right, returning to the agenda at 7.5.2, the new controls structures.
Thank you, worship. To present at 7.5.2, the new controls structures.
Thank you, you don't need to. Before you have the order for the new controls structure, project for selection, administration is looking for help, we can approve the order of the new construction or control structures replacement construction agreement. Your rescue instructions limited to the mission of red for $524,300 plus GSP and air therapy of our 700 western dark. In addition, approve contingency about 50% to the amount of $78,645, funded through the approved capital budget. Newly advanced control structure replacement project, looking system, revalidating control structures number two and three, unmasked that was attached to the decision. The new store management system comprises of central drainage channels, road crossings, control structures and ponds and lakes. The control structures were constructed. On a yearly basis, we put publicly kind of out submissions for pre-qualified contractors. That goes out publicly through all rural avenues through the construction association, South Bend, Houston, DC. Qualified contractors who wish to bid on anywhere for the city of Lloydminster for the construction year have the ability to submit a bid and is reviewed based on the scoring criteria and then they were chosen based on the evaluations of those standards. So if you were a pre-qualified contractor, I believe the last one we did was a three-year prequalification, but are your new contractors have the ability to submit and get onto the prequalification schedule?
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, it's just around the, you know, sometimes we run into scenarios where, you know, low bid isn't always the best option. When you look at a proposal as a whole, it sometimes gives you a better indication, but I understand that this process already factors in all the qualitative parts of a proposal because we've got them pre-qualified in that other step. So now it's purely on cost we can do it and probably there's some level of timeliness and if they're both getting into the same construction schedule, that doesn't matter about it.
Exactly. It's different from a request for proposal, the request for proposals looking for their factors, you know, when we're looking for consulting services, it's based on qualifications experience. We don't have a prequalification list for engineers, for example. With the prequalification list, they've already provided their safety records and they're satisfactory to those requirements. They're followed by work in city limits, usually the past. They have references that we check, so they're qualified physically to work. Now with these contracts, they're similar, the water stream replacement program, the street crew programs, those standards are purely based on low bid and that's based on standard contract.
Thank you.
Council Baker.
Thank you, Worship. I'm not familiar with the site where the act of wind, but we had a moment fall and they couldn't get it until December 1st. They had the equipment, I don't know how soft it is there, but it looks soft to me. It wouldn't, there's no penalty clauses for later.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Councilor Baker, I had a comment on safe conditions. I would assume that our engineering team has taken those safe conditions into consideration in process.
So from that perspective, I think, Council Baker, by your phrase, your question is if we, for some reason, couldn't start till 15th of December, or say 1st of December, October 1st start, that would impede the contract in any means.
Was the 1st of October, did you remember?
Yeah, it starts the 1st of October is what my intention is, that if we were to delay for whatever reason, if we didn't have a pile of rain as an example in the latter part of October.
So it's going to be both parties without every, two of those requirements? So if it's too mental, both parties agree that it is, then that would be negotiated between the two parties.
Because I hope you're wrong. I hope it's not freezing the 1st of October.
Well, it should, I don't know if necessarily it has to be frozen, Council, because we'd like it not to be frozen in the way you do the excavation, but once the excavation is complete, action done, the riprapping, that's the easiest of the jobs.
I'm just curious because we had a little trouble last year over one of those projects.
Yeah, absolutely. I have a question for administration. Permit application will be submitted for review at September 1st, the construction commencement. Yeah, we need to find the ball rather than the head ball because we're owed to a water contract and know that contract will show up on my desk very soon and should be signed. And if the water security agency turns us away, we now have entered into a contract without a permit in place. Is there some contingency plan in that contract that allows us out if we don't get permits? That's my question.
That's a fantastic question, Worship. But I'll leave you, Council, to figure out where.
Because it's my neck of the line because I usually have to sign this, but the state clerk and these, him and I both have similar colleagues, so we've got a pretty good look to see. Please.
Yes, good afternoon. So this permit that we're referring to is the aquatic habitat permit protection permit. And yes, we have already applied for that and we should be getting that for a construction there.
Okay. So I'll ask my question one more time and a little different. Is there in our contract that we allow the out if we don't get that permit, that the contractor will hold us to, to account? Because we're the one that requires the permit. It'd be different if it was on their permit, because we're the permit here, are pulling the permit for our work. If we don't obtain the permit, we've signed the contract and the expectation is the contractor could say you failed to meet the requirement. How do we cover ourselves?
Well, it's a very nuanced thing.
I've been down this road, that's why I ask, I have another life. So as Council Baker referred to, it's something for, we need to ensure, I would ask, our administration go forward to make sure that that's a clause to our contract going forward, especially when it comes to government permitting, because as we deal, continually deal with federal bridge governments, I just have not the faith that they're going to jump, as we need them to jump and we get into that position.
So either the city clerk's office as well as the engineering, the officer of community law, I will ensure that there's some provision within the contract prior to signing that would give us that ability.
Yeah.
Here in the call, that that permitting for this structure would be an issue as we've had multiple discussions with water security agency around this call, but we're working towards getting our full lease and all the resources to do that. There's support for you there, but as always, there's a process, but we'll make sure that prior to signing the contract, by your friends, we'll look at some provision for.
I would appreciate that and I appreciate the efforts and I agree with you. We're rebuilding structures that are existing. I think that water security agency knows how important the stormwater system is to the city and the surrounding municipalities that we serve. It's not just the city that serves, is served by the Millie Edmonds complex. Thank you. I appreciate that and just when you mentioned it, it just triggered on me because if we're not complete, it's not, makes it just a little bit nervous, but I'm sure you'll ensure that we're covered off.
And just so you know, I've been working closely with the permitting officer for this one and I'm pretty confident that he does everything.
I'm sure you're on his side. Thank you. Thank you very much. I guess the other, I just wanted to mention, and again, council's done a great job at this, is letting people know this is that $13 a month levy you pay for the stormwater assist in having this happen. It is a capital works, but that capital works has to be paid for from somewhere. So if people say, where is my $13 going? The $13 is going to fix two structures that are 30-plus years old that are very, they are required. They're so easy to go in, we'd be washing those roads downstream, I'm sure, and our other neighbors would not be very happy with us in apartment highways and the statue to ensure that we manage the water that's discharged into the Millie Edmonds. So I think that's a point I want to make sure people are aware of.
We'll look to council for direction. Council, back to me.
The council approved the award of the newly advanced control structure replacement construction agreement, construction limited to Lloydminster for $524,300 plus GST and the mayor and state clerk are authorized to sign and seal all necessary documents. In addition, approved contingency allowance up to 15% to the amount of $78,645 to be funded through the approved capital budget.
Second one, Council Baker. Any further questions or comments? Not seen any, I'll call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Moving on to agenda at 7.5, Cal 3, to the city manager, I want to see the council.
Thank you, Worship. His project was added to our capital list, let's call it, at council meeting on the 7th of 2018. He was unbudgeted for the year prior to that, at that council meeting, council was approved. A capital budget of $600,000 technology, $230,000. Before you, we have the RP bond landscaping project contract to be ordered. Administration looking for council to approve for RP bond landscaping project application, contracting limited to Lloydminster for $260,500 plus GST. Network required, yes, aside seal necessary documents. In addition, approved allowance of 6.2% contingency allowance to the amount of $13,500 to be funded through the approved budget.
Our request for quotation was issued on July 4th, 2018 to the water source and service credit contractor to complete all construction activity and structural struggles. RP bond is located east of 73rd Avenue in 21th Street intersection with the RP state neighborhood. The bond was constructed in 2009 with a lift station that pumps the excess water from the cell into the overland drainage channel that leads into the left of the lake. Due to incorrect sensor, level sensor settings in the pump, the normal water level, the bomb was higher than its design level, the level sensors were adjusted to normal water level and, and the normal water level is lower to its design level. However, the shore of the bond heans slightly as all of Tulsa had been rewarded and the water capable of sustaining vegetation. In August of 2016, the city landscape were, the bond included all the replacement of Tulsa grass seeds and sawed 200 shoves. Unfortunately, it was buried 2017 due to flooding and service management related, the bond was shut off resulting in the Indian landscape area being flooded causing the landscaping to deteriorate. In this attempt to prevent reoccurrence, the volume measures will be taken under this project. The normal, normal water level of the bond will be lowered between more than half years to two years. It will be done to try and keep the water from, so not from flooding the Indian landscape area. And the loading control mat to be installed will be entered into the existing ground. This will ensure that soil is supported, grass being established and it will ensure that in a case of flooding, that will be helped. Erosion control mat will be rolled faster, grass crew and installation of 2.1 meter wide 635 meter of raw riprapping and around the pond's overall water level. This has been a preventive scouring of the pond which were caused by fluctuation of falls from the water level to help operations. Our request for quotation was publicly posted on following sites. Its attenders were met south tenders of the construction association. Three bids were received and reviewed for breakfast. The tenor was for someone who's in the table. Kitchen contracting to Lloydminster for $260,500 plus 15 dollars. Sideboard on the mid of Lloydminster for $229,775. And last week, construction limited to Lloydminster for $319,400. Based on the review of the tenders received and shown in the above table, kitchen contracting was the lowest cost and considered to be rather the choice to actually provide. Budget considerations, the capital budget, as I discussed earlier, was approved on the 7th of the council meeting as an additional capital budget request. It will cover all construction costs and contingencies as shown in the table below for construction $260,500 plus the contingency $13,500. Total cost $230,000. Budget implications, the project is scheduled to take place on shores of the port of water for purposes that deep into prevent contamination of water construction. Pass it back to you, Worship. Do we have any questions or suggestions? Questions or comments? Council, back to me.
Just how do we come up with a deadline to change these decisions?
By assumption, the contingency was developed with the purpose of being in the project, so we had approved budget of $230,000. They took what the construction cost was and gave themselves as much as possible to maximize $230,000. So typically, it should range from 5% to 10% any order the tender would be undertaking. I think 6% in this case is probably more than 2%.
I just asked, the last one was 15. Great, so it's a huge difference, so I was just wondering what the council was saying.
The last one, there, it's a lot of, for the construction that we had placed, we knew that this is pretty straightforward over the water level. It's where it dropped in, this toilet, little, just go over there.
Council, back to me.
Thank you, Worship. This is very similar to my question on the last one. So this one was slightly different where we didn't just go pre-qualified contractors and then allow them to bid, we actually put these on those tenure websites and allow whomever to bid on those, correct?
Yes, so since this is a specialized project with landscaping, I wanted to get some landscaping contractors in this as well. And our pre-qualified contractors, some of them do contracting, some of them don't. Landscaping, sorry. Some of them don't, so I decided to just publicly open this to everyone.
Okay.
Our prequalification, our prequalification for contractors was based on underground works, so this is a little bit out of that review. Now there are similar contractors that can take on a project like this, which we're seeing in bids we've received. Typically, it's how it's called, what we recall by force, so therefore we would put it over the tender.
Okay. The only other question I had is just, so as far as if there's a qualitative side to this, so you know, sometimes we see the scoring, sometimes we don't see the scoring of like the qualitative side combined with the dollar values. It's just, I'm not sure where we, where we need to be in terms of what's the right answer. It's just, I wonder if, you know, from council's perspective, it would be better to get some sort of consistent approach where if it's services, we always show it or if it's, if it's, you know, buying goods, you do. You know what I'm saying? It's just, I, when I see it in the agenda report, it's sometimes whoever prepared it decides the information that council provided. Again, I want to say this because there is a project we had quite recently that, that low bid wins sometimes and low bid isn't always the best proposal. So I think it's always important to see some form of scoring on some of these things because we want to know whether or not someone had a, you know, an amazing proposal combined with a competitive price or they won based on price even though their proposal was not amazing. Would that change our decision making? I'm not sure. We'd probably go with the suggestion at the end of the day in. Sideboard of Kenham, Lloydminster Alberta, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-five. And last week, construction of Lloydminster for three hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred. Case on review of tenors received and shown in the above table. Kitchen contracting was the lowest cost and considered to be recommended to us to actually approve. Budget considerations, the capital budget, as I discussed earlier, was approved on the seventh of the council meeting as an additional capital budget request. It will cover all the structural costs and contingencies showing in table two. For structural, two hundred and sixty thousand five hundred plus the contingency, thirteen thousand five hundred total cost, two hundred and thirty thousand. Budgeted implications, the project is scheduled to take place in shores of the port of water for purposes that deep into prevent contamination of water construction. Council back to your worship, do we have any questions or suggestions?
Questions or comments, council director?
Just how do we come up with a definite intention for such things?
By assumption, the contingency was developed with all this for being in the project. So we had approved budget of two hundred and thirty thousand. They took what the constructional cost was and gave themselves as much as possible to maximize two hundred and thirty thousand. So typically, it should range from five to ten percent, any order, the tenor would be undertaking. I, I think, six percent in this case is probably more than two, two.
I just asked, the last one is fifteen, right? So it's a huge difference, so I was just wondering what the council was like.
The last one, there, it's like, you know, a lot of it was for dealing with structure that we had placed to give, but this is pretty straightforward, over the water level. It's where it brought in, this toilet, little, just go over there.
Counselor, first.
Thank you, worship. This is very similar to my question on the last one. So this one was slightly different where we didn't just go pre-qualified contractors and then allow them to bid. We actually put these on those tenure websites and allowed whomever to bid on those, correct?
Yes, so since this is a specialized project with landscaping, I wanted to get some landscaping contractors in this as well. And our pre-qualified contractors, some of them do contracting, some of them don't. Landscaping, sorry, some of them don't. So I decided to just, hopefully, open this to everyone.
Okay. Our under ground prequalification, our prequalification for contractors was based on underground works. So this is a little bit out of that review. Now, there are similar contractors that can take on a project like this, which we're seeing in bits we've received. Typically, it's out of school, what we recall by force, so therefore, we would put it over a tenor.
Okay. The only other question I had is just, so as far as, if there's a qualitative side to this, so, you know, sometimes we see the scoring, sometimes we don't see the scoring of like the qualitative side combined with the dollar values. It's just, I'm not sure where we, where we need to be in terms of what's the right answer. It's just, I wonder if, you know, from council's perspective, it would be better to get some sort of consistent approach where if it's services, we always show it, or if it's, if it's, you know, buying goods, you do. You know what I'm saying? It's just, I, when I see it in agenda report, it's sometimes whoever prepared it decides the information that council provided. Again, I want to say this because there is a project we had quite recently that, that low bid wins sometimes, and low bid isn't always the best proposal. So I think it's always important to see some form of scoring on some of these things because we want to know whether or not someone had a, you know, an amazing proposal combined with a competitive price, or they won based on price even though their proposal was not amazing. Would that change our decision making? I'm not sure. We probably go with the suggestion at the end of the day in ninety-five point nine per, ninety-nine point nine percent of the circumstances. But I just think it's equally important in a way that we acknowledge the scoring system if we're going to use it and just apply it consistently across the requests for decisions come the council. I don't know what the right answer is, but I, that's my only comment. I, you know, it sounds like a noteworthy project. We, we talked about it at budget time, I think, to a decent length, that this is actually something that needs to be done. It's past the point of warranty or anything like that for whoever the developer was. So it's something the city has to take care of. Was the city the developer? Not, wow, yeah, we better hold those people to account. Okay, and that's it.
Yeah, just, just to comment back, we can put some information together around the types of contracts to be tendered. But typically, you'll see any construction type work is usually based on low cost, low bid. In this case, we have three very qualified contractors locally who can do the work. We would, we're not asking them to submit a proposal, we're asking them to submit a price. So I think we just need to put some information together for council that describes the types of projects we do, request for proposal on, or request for quotation on, or what we can qualify for. So that's something we can develop in the next little while. It's going to take some time, but we are working on, maybe, our documents a little bit to be a little more consistent with some of the stuff that we've talked about. So we're in the process of improving that, so we can provide some additional information to you.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's all I can ask for is just even more information to understand why one is chosen over the other in terms of a method, and then so long as that's applied consistently, then, then your mindset's in the right place when you're looking at one of these requests that you know you're making a decision based on the proper information that you normally require from that data body. Yeah, it's one of those things we probably have to do to more or less keep good on our agreements and making things to the quality and level that we promised homeowners in the area. And not to mention, it's kind of like a part of, but another part that's not exactly when it's not taken care of properly. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I think that we expressed it well, it's like you mentioned, you understand, from the perspective of qualitative versus qualitative, because certainly, construction, in the case of this, is a qualitative, removing X number of yards or meters of material, placing X number of meters. It's a little easier to measure versus, when I think about going back to DART, when we were looking at which consulting firm we're going to use, what's that expertise? Because at the end of the day, our folks would be on site, in this particular case, saying, yeah, look, yeah, there you are, two point one meters, a little long, whereas something that consult involved, it's a little bit challenging, but I appreciate it. And council director's comments, a little more information is always appreciated from council, just the, the things it likes.
Yeah, that's a hundred percent, it's paid on quality too. Whereas when you're doing, the downtown DART is based on services provided, not the warranty services provided.
Yeah, but again.
So that's how we base our, our.
And we've seen enough requests, council to make decisions. We want to ensure that we are trying to make the best decision we can. So, good point taken. So look to council for direction on seven four five point three. Counselor director.
The council approved the award of the Parkview Pond landscaping project to kitchen contracting limited of Lloydminster Alberta for two thousand two hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred plus GST. And the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign seal all necessary documents. In addition, to approve six point two contingency allowance in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred to be funded through the approved budget.
Secondary, council chairperson. Any further questions? Not seeing any, I'll call for a question, all in favor? Opposed, carried. Moving on to agenda seven four five point four, supervisor manager.
Thank you, worship. To discuss seven four five point four, FCSS advisory committee funds, I'll ask that to contact you.
Good afternoon, Patrick. Thank you, worship. Good afternoon, council. I'm here today with recognition, council approved the appointment of Mr. Matthew Zelenka and Dr. Kent Weir to the family and community support services advisory committee. Our FCSS advisory committee currently has two vacancies, which we're hoping to fill. The FCSS advisory committee, as you know, makes recommendations to council on the allocation of community grant funding for the FCSS grants, as well as Saskatchewan waters. Administration later called for application, and we received a couple applicants who were interviewed by a team of administration and members from our FCSS advisory committee. The means of the applicants were then taken that the advisory committee to see that they were mandating all to them joining the committee, and we received that approval from the committee. And it's our, your take, seeking your approval to follow now.
Counselor director, any questions or comments? Not seeing any, I'll look for directions from council. Counselor director.
Since I'm not in conflict, you can verify that. I'd be glad to make a motion. The council approved the following, one of us in the family and community support services advisory committee for a one-year term, August two thousand eighteen to August two thousand nine, to Dr. Matthew Zelenka and Dr. Kent Weir.
Secondary, council director. All in favor? Opposed, carried. Thank you very much, Patrick. Moving to the agenda seven four six, operations, I'm not familiar with here. So move seven point seven to the chief outstaff, supervisor manager, and we need to see the staff.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. Administration's requesting that council accept for information purposes only two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one strategic plan update as of July two thousand and eleven. In October of two thousand seventeen, council adopted two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one strategic plan. At that time, city council and members of senior administration developed a series of goals and strategies to support council's strategic plan. In June of two thousand eighteen, administration aired an updated annual strategy outlining the strategic plan. This document included what the strategy was and the desired result and achievement, and performance measures, including how the strategy would be measured, as well as who would be taking the equal on that. Strategic plan update meeting was held with council and senior administration in July of this year. And we're happy to present the following document for information from that meeting today. I'll pass back to council for questions.
Thank you, chief staff. How many questions from, so it comes.
Yeah, I may notice certain, I mean, actually, we need to see if you have things on the right, but I also know that our vision, mission, vision and our value statements are not included in that. Is that going to be added at another time, or do we, or is it relative to us adopting a document today?
It is that our vision and mission and value statements are included in the full strategic plan, so this is just an update from that. We do have further information, we wanted to detail the values of the payment to council, and we do have further information at another point, to share with council. We have to have that discussion.
Okay.
That's good. Counselor chairperson.
Thank you, your worship. Looking at this document, and maybe, maybe it's inexperience, I'm not sure, but to me, this is the strategic plan. Like, the document we provided last year, kind of to me, from the level of detail it provided in terms of what is this council all about, what do they intend to accomplish or will accomplish over their term? I don't know that it really gave anyone an idea of it. It kind of just teased them a little with the general direction. Whereas to me, this is saying, okay, these are the things we want to look at and try and do over that period. So, you know, I'm really happy that this document made its way into some form of public record, because I think that, A, it gives the public an opportunity to hold us accountable for something. So if we said we were going to do something, we actually have an item of what we said we were going to try and do. So if we say, generally speaking, that, like, I think of one of the lines from our original strategic plan, I, that's not working. But either way, if you said we were going to have a robust, robust set of financial reserves and policies, okay, well, what does that mean? If you're the average person. This actually says, you know, that we're going to create specific policies for specific, actually, that's a poor example of one. But either way, there is a level of detail that I think is, is most important, that is within this document that I don't think comes out in the other form of the strategic plan published. So I think it's great to see, I don't think I disagree with anything on there, and I think it all hits the nail on the head for the most part. Thank you.
Just for council's purposes as well, we will attach the strategic plan, that eight page document, and certainly will add that to this when we make the call.
Do we have any questions, comments, council director?
Thank you, worship. Under fiscal strategy, it's stating in there, city council administration able to plan and execute fiscal activity without constraint referral to council. City council and administration are able to plan and execute this activity without constraint referral to council. Just exactly what are we saying there, council?
It's agenda.
That's on page five?
Page five.
Item A under D eight. Is that just a misprint?
Without constant referral, so I think what it's saying is it gives administration some leeway to make financial decisions within the budget, without always having to come to council when the decision is wrong, interpretation, not stated.
The director is saying, administration can carry on with council coming back to council for, it's just the way it reads it. Something's starkly wrong with that statement. It says, city council and administration are able to plan and execute fiscal activity without constraint referral to council. But the city council is council.
Council.
What am I reading wrong?
Council, without constraint. Council, therefore.
Yeah, I think, I guess the point about the administration's able to opt to assert all our, that the policies that are set for them in council are able to approve purchases and operational decisions without constantly having to come to council for a decision to make.
I think there's too many councils in here. Okay, I just read it off. I had two more, I wasn't sure, it's somewhat changed. Fire service is referred to in this document. With the change in our fire system, is that going to affect what we can do or can't do, or may affect what we can do or can't do?
Is it page number, council?
Uh, no. I just wrote it down, I was like, sorry.
Well, it's no problem.
But it would be under a, uh, protective services, maybe? Somewhere. But I talked about shared services for fire services, please see in here. Mike, Mike.
Is that twenty? I believe it's page twenty-one, where we talk about catering municipal, installing participation under a pursuit, creating beneficial partnerships with neighboring municipalities, opportunities for shared services for areas for Australians, municipality specific areas, and interest according to police and fire services, emergency management. I'm assuming that's what you're referring to, council meeting?
Well, shared fire service. We got a fire department, we may have twenty members, thirty members. And if somebody wants out, all those people going to town, is that what we're saying? Or most of them are happening? I know that it's a formula, but has it changed? My question was, has it changed since the change in the fire departments, the way they've been operating? That's my question.
No. So our fire departments have changed operations. Yes, they've got a, a rule to start what the agreement they've utilized, but that doesn't change the operations. And the strategic plan speaks to looking at opportunities to expand services which will be include police, fire, emergency, and so. I think those opportunities are always there. We do work collaboratively with our neighbors to provide any backup services where they require. I think it's still fits in the strategic plan, and I don't think it has any impact based on what other, other organizations.
The only thing if I made is that I guess if our costs have changed relative to provision of service, would share cost change in the agreement? And I think that's the only part to find reading into what you're saying as well, is that our, my understanding in first blush, looking at this, is that our costs are probably going to be higher through this process than they were when we negotiated and agreed with our neighbors. So I don't know whether those costs are fixed when we go out, or those need to be negotiated relative to our costs, but is that where you're going with this? That's what I thought you were going with.
I didn't want to give all the detail, I just wanted to know if you thought that went through, because the cost per hour, maybe, or any, maybe. I don't know what it is, but it's in the document.
Yeah, it's fine here, I guess, but the implication is this document and the other pieces in play will push us back to the other.
Yeah. And the question of policing, I read in here that in the financial report today, we're not policing intersections and things like that. Yet we're in a position, you want to send policemen out of town? In this document.
That was referencing for radar, the city at the intersection, not policing. Because I read that too, it was for radar, hadn't been at those intersections.
No, it's for the.
Yeah, it said for radar, just don't want people thinking that.
So, and to answer your question, council, I haven't policing. Certainly, the municipal police versus the municipal police first. The rate we have is we do work with the joint municipal R C P, because they are R C P, when requested. It's not that we are planning on, and that's again, provincial contract, to the federal contract, there's a whole bunch of pieces to that. So I think that the intention here is to look at opportunities, because we have space to accomplish greater policing throughout the area. And I think that's where we've been intending to go. Discussions with K division, discussions with F division, we're sitting on the board, what can we assist with to ensure that there's better policing, not only ourselves, but our neighbors, using our resources to the fullest without causing cost for straits. That's where I think, that's the intention of what we want to look at. And because there's lots of pieces at play, provincial governments negotiating with federal government, our R C P policing, the costs and contracts, we're in contract with the R C P, they, it was one of those areas that we felt that there's potential, but at the end of the day, we're always going to take it to account, our taxpayer first, and the residents of this city.
I guess, when you look at the finances, eight million bucks or whatever it is for policing, we pay ninety percent of the police dollars. And in many matters, values in your five thousand pay zero. So how does this wash over the tenure? Just, just a question. I don't need an answer today, but it needs to be answered.
So if I can, I'll try and give you an answer, I'll look to the administration. We have arrangements there, if we merge provide services, you have the ability to bill back for some of our services, and at least for policing. And we already have that in place for the cells at the detachment, and services that we provide to major detachments on both sides, both in Saskatchewan. So there is a mechanism there. There's a perfect mechanism when it comes to policing, because if there's a situation outside our surveillance, and it requires an additional policeman, do we immediately start the clock? No. But I think there's, there is a little give and take at that point. But we're not going to roll out of town with the entire detachment to assist someone outside the town. We have their, they have their requirements and obligations here. We may, and we may send the K N R unit as an example, which I believe we receive some compensation for that in the ongoing process. So there is a little bit of give and take there. It's not perfect, and that's one of the challenges. And if we can get to that point of being perfect, that would be great. But as I know, back to dealing with the provincial and federal governments, because there's two contract orders here that we, are partners, we have to work with.
Last part of that, do we have an agreement with whom?
We have an agreement with the R C P, federal, without releasing to our city.
For the city?
For the city.
Like, if you're talking this rural agreement about taking prisoners from other areas and.
So we have a service agreement, I believe is the right term, in the whole. It's, it's a part of the R C P contract, so when they bring a prisoner in from, from outside of the city, then we bill that detachment for the cost of holding that prisoner.
But that's the new, pardon me, who's that contractor with?
That's R C P, R C P. So their budget allows they bill.
That's RCP, RCP. So their budget allows they bill across the board.
Great ask. I've never saw that document, ever.
So, and with the dog, we have an MOU for the dog moving to a guard elsewhere, but they almost would go with the St. Paul dog first. And for RCP exiting the community, provide services on short notice, it's usually operated in three cities.
Is that available if it comes to you?
Imagine it's, I've tried to bring the last contract with sign, if I can, I can't bring the last one with sign. So we'll have to come back to you, I don't know, to see.
Thanks. Just a question.
I know I, I do see the invoice on a quarterly basis, because it moves above the $200,000 press or open to city managers or the C's that gets to my desk. And I had a chance to sit down with Protective Services and review that bill, and I had some questions just so I understood it. It was changed. It's a fourteen or eighteen-page invoice. So it details very clearly what services we paid for for the last quarter, referring to members, staffing, right through to all the other pieces. So there's, it's quite extensive. It's quite extensive.
Sounds smooth. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, Worship. I think the other thing to consider on this one specifically is the new MGA requires our neighboring municipalities to have an intermunicipal collaboration framework where we try to find a way to agree upon shared services. And really, this is, this strategy, part of it is acknowledging that requirement that we have with our neighbors to the west, although we would like to try and, you know, work with our neighbors to the east, all the same. But part of it is, is saying, okay, well, what are the opportunities for shared services? So we're not saying that we're going to go out and provide fire or policing right now. That's not necessarily what we're getting at. What we're getting at is by the end of 2019, we should have an idea of what services are there, an opportunity to have shared services. So we're not agreeing to anything right now. We're saying what opportunities are out there and what will make sense for us and for our neighbors. So I don't want to get hung up on, on whether we should or should not do it this time, or what agreements are in place for what we're doing right now. But I think the important thing is acknowledging our role in the inter collaboration framework that we have and how we have to work with our neighbors to figure out what shared services could potentially exist.
Any other comments or questions in the strategic plan?
It's just in there. You might have heard this somewhere, I didn't. I just asked him the question. Would like to know, really intent of the outcome is, generalities sometimes turn into realities.
They do. And I think that that's a very good point. I think from this council's perspective, as we've talked about it, this council will not commit until the third, that we've made that punch on the regional concept, and whatever it may be involving things. So tell me, we're, we're fairly sure that we, it's in the best interest of our community, of being a good community partner from the regional basis. So it's, it would be some good way to look at it. Counselor, first.
Thank you, Worship. I had one other comment for one of the items, and I don't have, I've got it, so you have to go to the page for me, because I just recalled this. But it was one in relation to transit or something along those lines. Just think you go to that page. It was strategy A and A. My only confusion was, just, are those two equal? Or does one assume that, so the city chooses next step in encouraging public transportation? Well, that assumes that there is a need that exists within the one just above it. So I, I just, in terms of cascading those two things, if they're both on the same level, kind of, I was thinking that, you know, the status update as well, as far as social programs, expanding senior taxi and disability, low income cutoff, those items, do they assume a failed public transportation study that does not support a need for public transportation? Does that make sense? The question?
Yes. Based on the way I see it, the first point is to determine whether there's a public transit required within the G, that's all based on, to review that by an extra consultant with community engagement, obviously. The other piece of that is whether we have a public transit system in place or are there opportunities for public transit. To me, that's looking at advancing those, those types of priorities. So I don't think they're logged together. I think they're individually and would be assessed based on the results of them.
Okay, yeah. My only concern is that the, the results of the public transportation study seem like a foregone conclusion, and we're already on to the next step of, of promoting some other form. But if we're saying it doesn't really say that, then, then I'm fine with that. I just don't want any confusion on that area.
Yes, for my, my interpretation of that, we already provide senior taxi program. We were funding through the, sorry, council bank, bringing up the community border city express.
Connects.
Our connects. So we are providing some orders of, we need those need for that, so I can see. That's just my interpretation.
Yeah, that I was going to add when I read that, in my mind, it didn't necessarily say this is going to be transit, or perhaps it might, that might be status quo, because that's always an option. And the other one might be expanding on connects. So in my mind, it didn't sort of predispose us to look at one particular subset or another, but it just says if there's a next step, if the next step is status quo, I'm good with the next step, because it may not be need. That's all clarification needed. Thank you.
The next step that is as well, all of the teams that will counsel seizure of the 2019 budget process coming up this fall, is that each of the teams throughout the city has been tasked to provide even an operational business plan on their teams, what their purpose function is, and what some of their goals are, and how that leads back to council's strategic plan. So you'll see that as part of the budget process this fall.
Any further questions? I'd love to, sorry, council, for your action, seven point one, seven point, seven point one, did you find a call for a question?
Counsel, except twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-one strategic plan, I believe, as a question.
Seven, yes. Anything for the questions? Not seeing any call for a question. All in favor? Opposed? Curried? Moving on to the agenda. I have a number eight, response information. Thank you. Mayor, council reports, my report for, from June eighteenth until a week or so long, is included. So I appreciate all the partners from council, administration, city residents, making sure that they get some holidays and they were able to get away a little bit. We had busy month and a half again. The summer didn't let off in a lot of ways. We had a lot of activities. Biggest crown, I guess, was the CPC A finals yesterday. What a tremendous final, eighth round race. It was right down to within an inch of the nose of the horse. They were to decide to pick up on a family pickup truck. So there was some happiness and then some sadness. But it was great, great racing. It was great to see the exhibition grandstands actually full to the brim. People visiting our city, residents, talked to folks from all over, from St. Paul, from Saskatchewan, Alberta and Saskatchewan, that were attending, spending a couple days in our city, and taking advantage of the local shopping and the facilities. I think people were looking for swimming pools and the spray parks. So our city got a great workout this past week, and it showed well. And the good Lord blessed us with nice weather. There was no rain and no major accidents. So it was a great event. But, you know, it's been a great summer. Continuing to see construction around the city progressing, continuing to move on. And, you know, other than that, I don't have a whole lot to add right at this time. Anyone else have any reports that they'd like to bring to council's attention? Counselor?
Thank you, Worship. I had the pleasure last week of bringing greetings on behalf of the mayor to a young lady who passed the bar here, the local bar. She made it into their association. And, you know, one of the points that I, that I made was there, and I just wanted to bring it up again, is a young lady by the name of Jessica Kelly. I think there's a lot of pride that, that we as city councillors can have, and of those who came before us that made this a place of high quality of life, because she was a young lady who grew up here in Lloydminster, went off, got her law degree, came back, now she's practicing laying down roots. And, you know, it's our job now to continue the trend of providing high quality of life to people, so that you get young people like her, like myself, that move back to Lloydminster and want to make it the place they want to live. So there's something that was a moment of, I guess, pride, even though it's not necessarily me that got her back here, but I intend to do that for the youngsters who are in school now. So it's great. Thank you.
Counselor, second.
Thank you, Worship. Yeah, I continue to see the success of young people that are products of our community. And I was excited today for a, a young man that I'm about to move over the years in my home, wider hockey, that Lloydminster product, Ty Smith, was signed his first NHL contract today with the New York Devils. So yet another Lloydminster product, made it to the big time with the NHL. So congratulations to the youngest family and all the people that had a hand in Lloydminster, making another exceptional hockey product out of many. So just these are facilities, this piece of the volunteers, and just all of those things. So congratulations.
Any other reports, councilor, this time? All right. Move on to agenda, agenda item number ten. Any other matters? I believe you had some others, so excited to add to it. So then, Jim.
Thank you, Worship. I guess just in follow-up to a previous discussion, you had that, the energy DC was the request to, provincial government to consider, or get input from municipalities in Saskatchewan, so during the election, timing of 2020, and moving it to 2021, I believe is the timeline. And I'll pass, city clerks that most dealing with it in terms of the emails, all the requests, to, I think, work, first of all, over discussion on it, I guess, in terms of what's your feedback, is your feedback is required, or is it 22nd August?
As councils aware of the municipal election in 2020, October 28th is scheduled to occur five days before the provincial election, which is scheduled for November 2nd, 2020. Earlier here, the Ministry of Government elections, you suggested that potentially there was an opportunity with municipal elections to later November. The response received was wrongly against that. So they're suggesting that with the potential delay of municipal election, one year to October 27th, 2021, and maybe four years after that. This would mean that the term of the current council members will be extended one year and potentially changing to ensure that general municipal election date remains the same on the fourth Wednesday in October, and that concerns raised by associations respecting Lloydminster's election date, conflict in conventions and that such can be addressed. The province has asked for some feedback on our resolution, some feedback from the administration councils on what that looks like, and they've asked for that by the 20th of August.
Counselor, bigger.
Worship, what kind of things fly around with this election as you go home? Late months late, former mayor of Minnesota, now council member, Mayor Cooney, had a great suggestion, and I thought, and he said, why don't you make it June, and have your elections in June? And I think there's a lot of merit in that. He didn't say why, but it certainly don't lie. First of all, it's summertime, the weather's good, people can get out. And a lot of seniors can't get out in the winter. The voters are home, they're not snowbirds. When you, if you go in November, a lot of communities out of the community, is Oregon, Vegas, or where do they go? Humana and Alderweireld. And I've heard people for years complain about our election. Even the advanced bowl makes it tight for summer. The third thing is, the city clerks that have to run these elections, you know, they're busy in the spring with budgets, late fall, and in the summer, maybe it's a little easier to get it organized. And if you go in June, people, kids are still at school, so they haven't gone on holiday. And I think there's a lot more voters in your community, and gives you a better cross-section of what's available, or who, whether they vote or not. That's another question. But it made a lot of sense to me, June one, and this has been talked about a spring or summer election a long time ago, not just today.
Hey, Counselor, first.
Thank you, Worship. I appreciate Counselor Baker's points there. And I have my own opinion on that. My only concern is with June, is I think you overly politicize the mail rate in that scenario, where whoever's running is going to be, I think it will be overly politicized. I think you'd be going right around the time the taxes are due, right or wrong. However, my, my main thoughts are on it, is that it, there's a precedent, and it's a lot easier for the provinces to change their election dates than it is for us. I don't think it's fair to the public to extend an extra year. There's, there's potentially people out there who aren't happy with what we're doing. I feel as though we're doing a, a pretty good job on the whole, but that doesn't mean that there couldn't potentially be enough people out there that disagree with that fact, that they would want an opportunity to get someone they believed would provide better leadership in governance than we could, or want to see a different direction for the city. And I don't think it's fair to take that opportunity away from those people, not to mention, there could be people who are, you know, waiting in the wings, who are looking for their opportunity to step up to the plate, who believe that they could make an improvement on what we're doing. And I don't think it's fair to them either. So, you know, I'm not in support of moving the election date a year ahead. If it happens, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But I, I'm of the opinion that it's most definitely, you know, not fair to the public and not fair to, you know, future leaders of the city if that, that election date's moved versus what the effect will be on the provincial government, which I can't see it being as big of an effect. Not to mention, there's 700 municipalities and 700 races that are affected throughout the provinces versus a couple hundred MLAs. Counselor, I was just going to add that, you know, in terms of impacting people and the number of people, the impact of more people with municipal elections than you are provincial. And it seems like, you know, the tail is wagging the dog in this instance. There are more people that are, are standing up to support and be part of their community in these elected roles at this municipal level than there are certainly in provincial level. And it seemed to me, if we're just looking at the sheer numbers of it, and where some of the greatest impacts are made, you know, there should be some respect and acknowledgement for the role that municipal government plays. I'd suggested a long time ago, why we shorten our role to three years, or look at the government doing something different. It seems that it's, you know, they push it longer. I, I just, again, there needs to be some recognition of the numbers and the impact this group, people that do this service, I just make in this province, that by moving us as opposed to them, there's a message. And I guess they better be corrected, sent the message, and do it.
Counselor, second.
Thank you, Worship. I think it was important that we brought this forward today. I mean, it's been the news in multiple different municipalities within the province. So it's good that we're having this discussion openly in front of everybody. For me, it's one of the biggest honors and privileges of my life to sit in this chair. I felt that from the minute I decided I was going to run, that if I was successful, it was probably going to be the most honorable thing that one can do from where I was. If afford the opportunity to go the extra year, I think there is great potential in that with this existing council. I also agree with Counselor Thorsten in that I'm not necessarily a favorite of going that extra year for all the reasons that I'll need to repeat. You just said, I'm totally agree with that. But I think it's important to know that in the end, they asked us for feedback. And we'll give them our feedback. And in the end, they'll make a decision regardless of whatever we decide going to do. This council's 100% in favor of everybody serving one more year, or 100% opposed to it, or 50/50. In the end, they're going to tell us what's going to happen. But I think this debate in public and bringing up the fact that, that this is something that they're looked at, because I know other municipalities have seen it and has made the news there, it hasn't here. I don't know how many people in Lloydminster are aware that this is even on the table. So I think it's really good that we, that we had it today, and that would be your either, either way to, to support this council decision going forward, although we're not going to be in medicine.
Counselor, girl.
I guess myself, having a young family, I've thought of this quite thoroughly. And my decision has been that regardless of my own opinion, being that I do think that voters will be staying for years, and in that four-year term, it's their choice whether we're here or not. It shouldn't be dictated to us. And I don't appreciate, provincial government is even providing that input, that our input is probably honestly not going to matter in the long run. However, should we be in this team an extra year, I will not be one that's going to go out and watch it happen. I was here and I support our community, and I will continue to make those decisions I can with the time for it.
Oh, just for everybody else to say that, I think that chances are that it makes much more sense for the province to change. And I, I mean that way, but at the end of the day, it is what, whatever they decide.
And I, I mean that way, but at the end of the day, it is what, whatever they decide. So for myself, I certainly, either way, I'm, I'm good with, so.
I'll try and close this off if I may. As has been said, this will not be a decision of this council, nor will we have immediately sent forward a resolution. But I certainly, I appreciate the opportunity afforded the rest for four years that have been given. And the province is in charge of this regulation and rule, and they will have to make a decision one way or another. If they so choose that we are required to spend our fifth year until there's a municipal election cost Saskatchewan, I'm certainly prepared to accept that. Should the new election date in 2020, that would be perfectly fine. There's, this is where it comes down to, they say municipal politics and provincial politics. Since municipal politics is a lot more fun, a lot more, right, right at the root of the people, but I believe that there's going to be a decision made at provincial level, and maybe it's already been made. I appreciate them asking for it, but we have that influence. So I guess I really want to make sure, and I appreciate this coming forward, that people in the community hear this today. This is something that's not going to happen until 2020 or 2021. We could go back to 2019, but I don't think that will have a council to check that they're all the back one year. But it affects 700-plus municipalities. Half the rural municipalities are 296, as well as the 449 urban municipalities in this province of Saskatchewan. So it, it has a big impact. Problem is, then you leave political value at political level, because the political, the governing party doesn't want to be the one staying here for five years, because they don't want to go back to people, if that's the business of Jews. I appreciate democracy finally, and I think as I grew up, it was often waiting for the government to make the right decision. They'd go either three years, five years, but now there is a cycle. Problem is, the cycle didn't line up with our cycle from municipal levels. So stay tuned, but I appreciate the debate. Thank you. Counsel first.
Thank you, worship. I only disagree with one point, and I think that we should do a resolution, and that's to send the message that this council is not in favor of extending our term an extra year. I, I don't see why we wouldn't do that. It's part of the record that this council made a decision that we would prefer, because we're being given option to provide advice. We're providing the advice that we would prefer than not extend our term an additional year.
I would entertain that motion.
No.
Unless it would be for...
In all respects, that's one man's decision.
Yeah.
To not do anything. I missed one point in my, to think about this. Doesn't matter for me. You can go anywhere you want, was the fact. If you recall, when you got on the council, what was the first thing staring you in the eye?
Budget.
Right. And if you came in in June, you'd have time to be involved in that budget for that first year. But when you go in in November, or whatever it is, you have got fluids going on, and here's the budget before you. So I missed that point.
Okay, that's a good point.
Whatever resolution or whatever you want to tell them, but I think what we should do is not just miss one option. You can have a vote goes, but if that June date is acceptable, we should spell out the things that we think are important. I know Mayor Cody would certainly talk to the ministry.
I don't feel a resolution is actually appropriate. They ask for our feedback. Feedback isn't just one resolution, it's a combined effort of everybody's comments that could apply, and I don't think the resolution's appropriate.
So I'm going to ask the city board to use for, write down some of the things, comments you wanted to discuss.
I have, I have captured those comments, and I've compared one of those comments to Mr. as well as if council chooses to make a resolution, council, in the process of council can defeat that resolution tomorrow.
So I'll leave it to you, Counselor Horson. Counsel first.
I think if we say that we discussed it in an open council forum, so that they know that we did discuss it, so that the residents of our community are aware of the situation, whether or not they were ready to, what's happening before this meeting or not, is an important aspect to put in the letter, but I still stand for a resolution.
I understand what she's saying, or Counselor Monroe's saying. I think it'll be difficult to outline all of the possible scenarios that are potentially appropriate rather than what's being proposed. I think there are some creative license that exists for whoever's drafting a letter back to the province. I think it's a general rule saying that, that this council's not in favor of extending our term a year. That's not saying that we're all going to, you know, cause a by-election on the day that we would normally be done, but we're not saying that. All we're saying is, you're giving us a choice to provide feedback, and our feedback is, we would prefer not to make a change. And then that's part of the public record. Someone can come back here in a year and know that we were not just trying to extend our own term. We were not trying to extend our own mandate. What we're trying to do is provide the best advice on behalf of our residents, which may not even necessarily personally benefit us. So I'm prepared to make a resolution. You can choose about how you wish. I move that council provide feedback to the province of Saskatchewan that we are not in support of the proposed date change of the municipal election.
Second.
Fair enough.
Second. I'll call a third time for secondary. The motion does, divide a secondary.
Democracy in action.
Those are any other matters that this council needs to discuss at this time? Not seeing any, I will look to the media for any part of some lead.
Thank you, worship. There are inquiries for yourself, my officers, as well as counselors, Horson, Baker.
Thank you very much. I look to council for a recess.
A recess.
A recess, second. Counsel Harrison, all in favor? Resess.
Support the decision of council?
Just practice.
You don't turn that, hey? You don't turn that.